We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Whatever month it is, September the 10th, 6:00 PM. Want to say I appreciate you being here. Hope that, uh, hope we don't have to move. I think that's a signal to us here. It's not all, or I'm not all. Can you hear me now? Todd, can you hear me? Uh, can you hear me? All right. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Mr. Rowland is the person we've called on at first.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Thank you, Board. Gentlemen, after much reflection and with a heavy heart, I will announce my intent tonight to step down as Macon County Manager. This decision has not been easy. I've given the past 15 years of my life to this organization, 10 of which have been serving as the county manager. It's been an honor and a privilege to work alongside some of the most talented, driven, and compassionate individuals I have ever known in the Macon County employees. Together, we faced challenges, celebrated victories. We've mourned losses. And through all that, I feel like we became more than colleagues. We became more than friends. We became family. And that is what makes this decision so bittersweet. I've loved every second of this journey. I love this organization. And still to this day, I love my job. My decision to resign as county manager is my decision. And I'm making it in order to pursue another career opportunity. As I've discussed with the Board members, I will stay on and assist this Board in the replacement process as I work through my notice period with October 8, 2024, being my last meeting. And at that meeting, as you can imagine, I have quite a few people over the course of 15 years that I'd like to thank and a few things I would like to say. But out of respect for those of you in attendance here tonight and respect for the agenda, I'll hold my parting words until October. But nonetheless, I appreciate you accepting this, my official notice of resignation. And again, I can't thank you all and the Macon County employees and this organization for the opportunities, the friendship, the love. And it's forever home to me. And I appreciate each and every one of you. So I'll hold the rest of my comments, Mr. Shields, till October. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Continue on.
Okay. As we move along, do, um, we'll go into the moment of silence. Who will be leading our prayer tonight, Mr. Chairman?
The Lord Antoin.
Chairman?
I pledge.
Ready.
I will do a prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Rowland, I believe you're still, uh... Mr. Rowland, I believe you're the public hearing person. A, B, and C, and D.
Yes, and D.
Darlene is with us tonight. How are you, Darlene?
Good. How are you guys doing?
You're fine.
First grant, we'll open the public hearing for the 5311 admin grant. That, this is for FY '26. So this is our normal admin grant that we get every year. The rate's set by the state on what amount we get. This is an 8515 grant. And we're asking for $230,000, 200 and, sorry, $230,232 in the grant. And the local share for this grant is $34,536.
You need a motion to approve that?
We have to do each one individually.
Oh, we just have to see if there's any comments.
Comments first.
So this is opening a public hearing, right?
Yes.
5311, Darlene?
Yeah.
There is no one signed up to speak.
Somebody has?
No.
Okay. So we need to close the public comment, right? Close the public hearing.
Make a motion, probably, public comment.
Public hearing, yeah.
Public hearing, yeah. Hearing, hearing.
Right.
I see. That was you, Josh, who second?
I don't know. You can just, you can close it with a gavel.
Okay. Public hearing closed.
At this time, I make a motion. We approve the 5311 admin grant with the Macon County Community Transportation Program.
I second.
Any questions from the Board? All in agreement, raise your hand. Thank you, Darlene.
Thank you.
We go to 5310 now?
Yes.
Okay.
5310 grant is for elderly and/or disabled. It helps us provide reduced fares for those people. We ask them for the same amount that we did last year, which, well, for this year, which is $200,000. It's a 50-50 grant. Macon County Transit matches this grant itself with our N-TAP funds and our block grant funds. So it's actually no county dollars. So we match it ourselves.
But there's no match on this one?
Right. And just for your records, last year in FY '24, with this grant, we provided 12,421 trips.
Any public comments?
Did you open the public hearing?
I think I did with this.
No. So go ahead and open the public hearing pertaining to this.
Ooh. We're going to get to come. At this time, we'll open the public hearing for 5310 elder and/or disabled grant, which you've just explained. Right. Okay. Uh, closed.
There is no one signed up to speak.
Okay.
No one signed up, nobody wants to speak?
Close. At this time, we close the public hearing. Uh, let's see.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the 5310 elderly and disabled grant for Macon County Transit.
There's no match.
Well, it's 50-50, but they cover the, uh, they cover it in, uh, with other funds, yes.
Second.
All in agreement, raise your hand. Combined capital grant?
Yeah, to open it.
Open the public hearing. At this time, the public hearing is open?
On the combined capital, Macon County Transit's asking for $74,139. This is an 801010 grant. The local share for this grant is $7,413. This grant is where we usually get our vehicles, but we're not asking for any vehicles for '26. We are asking for a new camera computer for the cameras for our vehicles. And we're asking for a new camera system for our vehicles. We got our camera system in 2012, and they're very outdated. So we're looking to get a new camera system for them and a new laptop.
Okay. So we have to open the public.
It already opened.
Open the public.
Ask anyone else what to speak?
Public, uh, anybody from the public?
No one has signed up to speak.
No one has signed up. At this time, we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion regarding the combined capital grant? Make a motion to accept it.
Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the combined capital grant for the Macon County Community Transportation Program.
Is there a second?
Second.
In further discussion, the Board. If not all in agreement, raise your hand. Thank you. Do I have to close the public hearing? But we already closed it, right? D. Concept grant. Open the public hearing on the presentation of the concept grant?
Concept grant is what we've been using to do the Asheville Route, the WNC Express. We're asking for $100,000. This grant is a 50-50 match. Macon County Transit will use contract revenues that we gain from Swain and Haywood County and also our Medicaid if that doesn't cover it. So we can use Medicaid money to cover the match. So it would not be anything out of the fund balance.
There was no match?
No. Well, there is, but we're covering it.
No county, okay. Open the public hearing. Any comment from the audience?
You have one person signed up to speak, Mr. Janus. Hugh Janus.
He didn't sign up on the wrong paper. He didn't have the...
Is Hugh Janus here?
Janus.
Okay.
Does anyone know? Is it Mr. Dennis? B E N S?
It looks like it's J-A-N-U-S is the last name.
Janus.
Okay.
Closure.
He's not here to speak, okay. Close the public hearing at this time. From the Commissioners, discussion regarding the concept grant? No discussion. Make a motion to accept?
At this time, I'd like to make a motion. We accept the concept grant for the Macon County Transit.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, raise your hand. Okay. And here we're closing the public hearing. So, Mr. Rowland, we're closing all of the public hearing at this time?
Yes. Now we just need the resolution.
Approval for your resolution, yes.
The, a resolution to approve all those grants. The total for these grants was $604,371 total. The match is 191, 999,000. MCT will be covering 150 of that. So the county portion will be 41,949.
Is that something we just agreed to or...
You have to approve the budget.
You have to approve that. And then she has to know who seconds and who makes the motion.
Second. Second.
Who made the motion?
Danny's thinking you made the motion, Mr. Shields.
Did you not make a motion?
I did now.
There you go. Second.
He's taking it.
Yeah, move along.
That's Rowland.
Vote.
Need a vote. Got a vote?
All in the, all in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Darlene.
Now, let's see.
Let's...
But we'll move over to the ordinance.
At this time, yes, if we could, Chairman Shields, if we could make, um, move adjustments to the agenda, if we could move that to 6A and make the public comment, period 6B. Is that the hardest way we could do that?
Uh, you want to call it 6A?
Okay.
It works.
Yes, we'll call it 6A. Will be adjustments to an approval of the agenda.
So it'll be 6A, okay.
And with that, Mr. Chairman, if we could, I think you were going to move...
At this time, um, on the adjustments to the agenda, under Old Business Number 10, discussion regarding watershed protection ordinance, Board of Commissioners, we're going to move that, uh, to, what you said, 6A?
Uh, we're going, we're moving. You're moving it off the agenda. You're taking it off the agenda.
But am I leaving it on 6?
No. No, go. 6A, so we'll remove that from the agenda. We're going to remove 6D.
And I'll share with you the rhyme and reason because it was going, it was one of our ordinance that we were going to talk about tonight. The reason we're taking it off tonight, we're going to move it to January. And there's a reason for it. We want to make sure that the Planning Board has had an opportunity to review the watershed protection ordinance again. We'll make sure that happens. But at the same time, we want to make sure that other interested parties who've indicated interest in the watershed and shed conversation, the town of Highlands, um, they, they, by, through Mr. Taylor, Mayor Taylor, they've expected interest, uh, that the Board of, uh, that the town of Highlands Board of Commissioners be involved in the discussions so that all stakeholders are aware potential impacts of the changes to the regulations. So in order for that to happen, we're moving, we're going to move all these requests to January. The town of Franklin made a request that they too would like to be involved in the discussions so that all stakeholders are aware of potential impacts. And I talked with Bill McCarty today. He sent a, his group had made a, I'm not trying to be smart, but it's like a dissertation of what they were going to present tonight. But he's fine with going ahead and presenting this in January. The, uh, when I talked with him today, the convincing part of knowing that he would be okay with this, he, they made up in the, in his, um, Macon County Water Supply watershed protection ordinance, proposed changes on page 19. The last sentence, um, he said here, or this group said here, "We would be pleased to work with the county to improve and clarify the ordinance with respect to RV parks and in the general." And we moved all that to Jan, to January. And the reason I don't have a date for you yet, Mr. Rowland, is because of the budget piece or the date for the budget?
Yeah, I think we, well, you know, I think, uh, you know, in those, mis-speaking with you, I think it was... Let me jump in right here. I feel like what needs to happen, Mr. Shields and Mr. McCarty, we need to find a date and time to schedule some planning board meetings where we can have these discussions. I think that'd be the best place to have this. And McCarty and I have had that conversation. Certainly don't have any trouble, but I think we just need to set a date and time with Caleb, our Planning Board Director, who I don't see right now, and Mr. Shields. Let's have some discussion there and table this thing till January timeframe, if that's when you want to have it.
Did you want to add another?
Sorry. Yeah, let's just go ahead and do the floodplain there too. Do floodplain and watershed and, uh...
Move all of them.
We'll have both of them in January.
Could I add one thing to that? A comprehensive study is, I think, what we're approaching here. And in doing so, I've made a, uh, let's look at this river corridor completely. And I would like to task either the Planning Board or a select committee with the support of the, this is my personal opinion. I think we need to do a charge some entity other than this board to do a feasibility stake on the pros or cons of the Lake Emery Dam removal. Uh, it's going to be a hot potato. A free-flowing stream through town of Franklin and through this area would be a phenomenal asset in the long run. They did in Jackson County, they just did a big one out on the Indian Reservation, Native American Reservation. And that's my, if we have support from this board, I think that ought to be included in a comprehensive study. This doesn't have to be done tomorrow, but put it all together. And Bill McCarty is a big asset in that. Said he hated today that that was coming, but it looked like it's here. And he's very competent and capable.
Are you saying, because the Planning Board is going to be reviewing, uh, the watershed?
The little Tennessee, yes. And let's go all the way with it. Go all the way with this thing.
Get that request down, that, uh...
Yes.
So you charge a planning, or whichever.
Planning board.
With three, with three tasks. Watershed.
Reviewing the watershed.
Floodplain.
Floodplain.
And the study on removal of Lake Emery Dam.
Removal of Lake Emery Dam.
There's consensus, all we need on that? Sure. If I know.
I think as far as moving that off of the agenda, we do need a vote to move the watershed off today so that that is now removed from today's agenda.
Yes.
Moved until we schedule it right now, tentatively set for January.
All right. All three.
Let's, let's, yeah.
You just send the ordinance.
Right now, that's the only thing that's on the agenda is what we just talked about. But those other things follow with, based upon the direction of...
Before we approve the agenda, I'd like to add, under New Business, if, if there's no other additions. Maybe let's go New Business Item F and Discussion. I'll say County Manager Discussion.
Um, so we need a, uh, we need a...
I'd like for that to be an open session.
Um, so we need a motion to...
To approve the agenda.
Before we move, I need to make a correction on the agenda. On the consent item, consent agenda portion, the settlement report is for 2023, not 2021. So if you, we'll make that correction on your agenda.
Do we have two motions on the floor? We've got Paul, those three areas that Paul talked about. Are we going back and just vote on the, uh...
We just have to vote on the agenda amendment, which should do it. And then Kami will reschedule the, so they won't come up now in the October meeting. We can just be one vote on the, those revisions to the agenda.
Chairman, at this time, I'd like to approve the adjustments to the agenda.
Any more discussion? All approved.
That's what I was going to say.
Real quick, before, we ought, we need to remove Item 10E.
So is that all that you have?
What are we doing now?
Removing Item 10E.
10E.
Approval of the...
Who made, who made the motion?
Josh made it. I'll say that motion.
Okay. Votions taken in further discussion. Okay.
You have added Item F under New Business, County Manager Discussion, and we've removed Item 10E, which is in regard to the lease.
Was there something else that we've done?
That's gone, that's gone.
Yeah, I got it.
And then you got a new one there.
But what about, so we'll call, we'll get this one coming. And we had a motion, second on this and any further discussion? All in agreement? Raise your hand. Okay, thank you. My mic. Nobody fell out up here. All right, we got all there?
All right, so we're going to 6B, public comment.
Yeah.
Before public comment, do you want to make an announcement about the time? Not going past eight?
Can we, why not?
Say what?
Can we, why not? Then can we, the people are on the agenda, can we say?
Danny, I don't know if you can, I don't know if you can do that. Can we say again?
He said because. That way to turn the wind, if we get back up.
So he can just let us know how to move it to that October meeting.
If we hold it, we shouldn't. I don't think we'll be here too long tonight. I mean, I think best by what we've done today or now, I'd say let's see where we get to that point and if we need to take a recess.
So is that what we do, recess it until the October meeting?
Yeah, we could, or even if we have to have a special meeting. I think that might, a special meeting or a recess meeting might come up under 11F. Now we've got, got a whole new issue we got to get to working on under the County Managers announcement. So that will probably require a decision or something between now and next meeting.
Okay.
Good. So do you want to...
So no need to make an announcement about it?
I don't think so. I mean, we could get to that point if you want to. I mean, that's up to you, if we're going to. But we, it might be addressed. I think, you know, we could probably get through it depending on how many, how many comments are tonight.
All right, well, let's try to...
Let me say, let me just march into what we're talking about. Let me say, let me just march into what we're talking about. We're talking about adjourning at 8:30, which is two hours away. That's, that's what we are talking about, how to do that, and, and if we can capture that, if we can get all this done within this two hours, that's what we're trying to do. And at that point in time, at a certain point in time, Mr. Antoine will make a motion, or you or Paul want, right?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, or, or for recess. Okay, I'll make, I'll make a motion to for recess at that time.
We'll cross that bridge, and we'll keep watching the clock.
All right, let's go. Public comment.
What I'm trying to say is how many of these last week or last?
The first 11 are from the August 13th meeting.
Okay, I'll call your name, and if you still would like to say something, you're in the public comment, that comes from last month's meeting. We had, I think we had 14 remaining. Yes. Ed Hig, H, H, A, I, G, H, T, E, E, are you here?
He's not here.
Okay, he was on. Paul Chu.
Paul Chu. I'm Paul Chu from Otto. Honorable chairman and commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to talk with you tonight. I've got a farm in a little valley up on north, on the north fork of Coeida Creek. If you know Roy and Ann McClair, then you probably know where my, my farm is. The electricity stops at his house, so if you go on, you, you've got to produce your own electricity there. Laura Sanders, storyteller locally here, lives in the last existing log cabin up in that valley dating back to 1839. So there's a lot of history in this valley, including cows and moon chinning. But hiking up in the valley on the sides, sometimes it's just littered with rocks, so you have to ask what happened to the soil. I guess there weren't any sediment ordinances back then to control, you know, what was done. There are many reasons for the, why this way of life, you know, quit, including railroads, cash economy, the trees that were dying, you know, during that time, and the farming practices, you know, that were unsustainable. But just south of this valley is the Coeida Hydrologic Lab, which I'm sure you're familiar with. It's the oldest lab in the country. In 1980, the lab joined LTER, L-T-E-R, which is the Long Term Ecological Research Project. And science studied the land use changes since the 1800s until the present, and projected into the future what was going to happen. So they evaluated impacts to the environment, both natural and man-made. Coeida provides solid science to enhance education and training to guide future land use, planning, and policy. And on average, 60 groups and 1,500 people a year visit the Coeida lab and hear from scientists and staff. Audiences include specialists, students, policymakers, policymakers, including local, state, and federal agencies. It sounds like we could use their expertise. For over eight decades, research teams have produced over 1,700 papers, establishing the foundation of knowledge required for science-based management of natural resources, all right on our backyard here. Bill McCollum, a former scientist, spoke before the commission last month. The lab studied impacts of disturbances on the ecosystem. Disturbances can come from nature, such as storms, insects, disease, drought, but more often, they come from human activity. Climate change, air pollution, harvesting trees, engaging in recreation, clearing land to farm, developing property. Understanding the complex interconnections within watershed ecosystems requires skills for many areas of expertise. Science is slow, takes patience to understand all the complexities, and we need experts to explain this to us. We have a lot of organizations and individuals in Macon County that help, that are working to help preserve our environment and for the enjoyment of everyone. On the front line are educators like Bill McClary, who provides hands-on experiences for our youth to see nature up close. These experiences can be the basis for actions as, as an adult to help preserve nature and our environment and appreciate the role of science. Children growing up without the advantage of direct experience in nature may have what is called the nature deficit disorder, NDD, not ADD. They may not care about nature or want to protect it, so these people are very important. As a member of the community, I respectfully ask that you consider the science behind decisions that you make and consult with experts in the field for their knowledge and expertise, and not rush to make changes that may have negative impacts on our environment for, for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
This is a great book, put out by Coeida Hydrologic. It's 36 pages. I've read it three times. Every time I read it, I learn something more about the work that they're doing there.
Thank you, sir. Where's Michelle? R-U-I-G-R-O-K?
It's easier.
Okay. Is Cindy here, Karis? K-A-R-E-S, Cindy here? These are from last month's meeting. Ben Bennett? Ben? Doug Woodward? Woodward? Heather Nebraska?
Yes, sir.
All right. How far did I miss that, Heather?
She's perfect. She's correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I want, a couple of things I want to talk about tonight, guys. Good evening. First off, I want to take this opportunity to thank those of you that worked so hard to get that high school project to fruition. And Mr. Rowland also, thank you very much for that, guys. On that note, I want to talk about the Quartercent Sales Tax Referendum that's on the ballot in November. I think we've all seen the numbers. We've all seen how, how the towners can help pay for this, how, you know, it's going to benefit this project. But it failed miserably last time. And it doesn't seem like there's any particular group or anybody that's maybe informing citizens that don't attend these meetings, how it could benefit us. And I know you guys as a board can't necessarily make a stance on it, but what I'm asking is maybe as individuals, if you can, you know, let your supporters know how important it is, whether it be social media, or letters to the editor in the newspaper, or whatever it is, just so that we're sure that it, it passes, because obviously we need to pay for this high school for the next 20 years, I believe. And, sorry, I'm not a terrible public speaker, but you get a little nervous in here. Where am I on here? Oh, lastly, I do want to highlight the issue that was brought to you guys' attention at last month's meeting, about the Healthy People, Healthy Carolinas issue that was brought to your attention by some of those folks and the $200,000 grant that was sent back. And I'm just asking, if you guys, believe you're the liaison, maybe just look into that further at the Health Department meeting on the citizens' behalf and the farmers' behalf, and maybe see what happened with that. I did also want to mention on that, that, that money directly benefited the new farmers' market downtown. And I don't know if you guys have been there, but it seems to be a massive economic driver to our downtown. Saturday morning into the afternoon, it runs nine to two. Downtown is hopping lately. And again, that funding, part of that was going towards the, the running of that farmers' market. Another important point on that is that new farmers' market, unlike the old one, offers a two-times food stamp program for food stamp recipients. They can bring their food stamps in and get double what they would get if they were going to Ingalls or Walmart. So they bring their 20 bucks in, you know, their card or something, and they get tokens to spend 40 with our local farmers. It's going directly in our local farmers' pockets. So it's not Ingalls, or Coca-Cola Corp., or Conagra Foods that's getting that money. It's, it's our people, our farmers, and I think that's pretty important. So if we could just look into why that grant was sent back, maybe, and into that. I appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
Don't move.
Yes.
You got a pen?
Yes, sir.
Let me give you a name and number.
Okay.
John Knipple. You'll see, he's in this.
I saw his name on there.
He is the marketing agent for the Course at Sales Tag that's on the Business Advisory Council that I'm a part of.
Okay.
So I'll see you as we move around.
Okay.
Give him a call.
Okay. I got all the time in the world.
Got to recruit, got to recruit when you can.
Thank you. Thank you.
There she is. Is that her?
Good evening. Thank you for letting me talk. And thank you, Mr. Rowland, for your service, because you know what you're doing, and I appreciate that. Good evening. My name is Sarah Johnson. I'm from Shope Creek up in Otto, out in Coeida, same place as Mr. Chu. In fact, my great-great-grandfather built the cabin that Miss Laura is in. I'm here to oppose the addition of the RV parks and the subdivisions along fragile riparian areas in the town's drinking water supply. As a mother, I am concerned for my son's well-being when he goes to school and has to depend on county water. I want it to be healthy for my child and yours. I want your children to get baptized in the same creeks as their grandparents. Water is sacred to many of us in so many ways. Please proceed with caution in this matter, as, as I wish you had with the erosion. RV parks or cheap subdivisions in flood-prone areas where the runoff can send toxic petrochemicals into the water is not good. The reason you should care about biodiversity is because when these endangered species, these endangered species are canaries in the coal mines. They are bio-indicators of the health of the area. The reason you should care about nature is because it is the goose that lays the golden eggs. All the nature brings, all this nature bring, does bring economic benefits. The Great Smoky Mountains National Park brings in 3.4 billion cumulatively. The Blue Ridge Parkway brings in 1.4 billion. The Western North Carolina Nature Center brings in 23 million. Please proceed with caution and contact the relevant experts on this topic. Do not cut corners or skip steps. And in regards to the sediment ordinance that did pass, when it comes to the Lake Emery Dam, sir, the problem with that is that it is 100 years of the banned chemicals since World War II is locked in that sediment. Garnet sediment has a unique ability to bond to things very well. They use it in filtration systems, too. And unless you have a plan to deal with the sediment that's coming from upstream, like say in Otto, you're going to have the same problem going straight through Needmore. Because the thing that Lake Emery Dam does, whether you like it or not, is slows down the water. It lets it fill up Lake Emery, which is not good either. I understand that. But without the dam, you don't have anything protecting the Needmore stretch. It gives the Little Tennessee time to slow down, whether we like it or not. And when you start thinking about whether you're going to tear this dam out, how are you going to keep it from washing down through there? That is the most pristine section in this whole county as far as this river goes. It's where your freshwater mussels are. I've got studies I would love to leave with you regarding your water treatment costs with, in regards to increased sediment. I've got a study in regards to the sediment land use and freshwater mussels prospects and problems from the University of Chicago. And I've got a USGS suspended sediment and bedload in three tributaries to Lake Emery and the upper Little Tennessee River Basin. It's a little old, but since we're dialing back the clocks to legislation that used to be old, still applies. And I would love to leave it with you. I'm sorry, the microphone's feeding back. And this is a little bit of information on your hellbender. And I would like to take a minute to ask permission, if possible, for some signs put up in Parker Meadows, and I'll pay for them. I'll do all the work for it, I just need permission to do it. Little signs that ask people not to stack rocks, because they're going in the middle of the stream and jerking out the big rocks. And places like Cartuga Jay, where the town sources the drinking water, is known for their hellbenders. That's where a few of them are still left. And that's where it comes back to the bioindicator species. It's a poor man's water test. If the salamanders can live there, you can drink that water. So if I could get permission to put up a few signs in Parker Meadows asking people to not disturb the rocks, I'd appreciate it. And I don't know who to ask, but I'm going to start with y'all. Thank you.
Mr. Rowland.
That's okay. I'll email him. I sent him an email before, but he's got a lot going on.
Send me one.
Okay, I will. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
If you want to leave those, I'll take them.
Yes, I would love to. I've been trying to hit y'all for months, and I'm sorry.
And I'm sorry y'all.
Jason Lo, Jason, there you are.
Hopefully this thing will feedback. If it does, I'll stand back.
Push it, little cover down there, if that's causing you a problem.
Yeah, it's on there pretty good. All right, can y'all hear me okay? All right, good evening. So this is about the Macon County Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Ordinance, specifically the part highlighted in section 153.05, general requirements, part A, getting technical here, which reads, "In addition, no person shall undertake any land disturbing activity which disturbs more than one acre or disturbs an area that has a slope greater than one to one." A slope greater than one to one, without having an erosion control plan approved by an administrator, except those land disturbing activities specifically excluded by this ordinance. So I emphasize that slope one to one. Y'all know what a one-to-one slope is? It's 100% slope, or 45 degrees, which is incredibly steep. The way the current language reads, a landowner can clear 0.99 acres on 100% slope without needing a land disturbing permit or erosion control plan. An acre is roughly the size of a football field if you take away the end zones. So I'm not sure where the one-to-one slope threshold originated from, but you can't even walk up a shingled roof on a one-to-one slope, right? It's that steep. A more reasonable threshold would be one to five, so a 20% slope, one to four, or even a one-to-three slope, which is 33%. So I woke up in Highlands, and there was recently a 0.86 acres cleared. The upper slopes are greater than 20%, and the entire tract slips towards a small stream that drains 100 yards further into a lake. Fortunately, this property is in Highlands, which has a strict erosion control ordinance. And I called the town planner, because the silt fences were not installed properly. You could drive a small tractor underneath them. The county, the, the city was on it. They, they made the contractor put in the fencing correctly, and the issue was resolved before the next storm arose. So people are building on forested mountain slopes that no one thought would be built upon 20 years ago. This county has grown 12% since 2010. A 30% slope is steep, and most folks would need to grab onto trees to help them make it up the hill. it up the hill. You would need to walk on all fours to climb a 100% slope. I work in the woods a lot. So you'd have to cling to whatever you could grab so you wouldn't roll backward downhill. I would strongly encourage the commissioners and planning board to take another look at this 1:1 slope threshold and amend the existing ordinance to the slope threshold that is more reasonable to protect our mountain streams, lakes, and the property that is located downhill. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Angela Fabe Martin. Jim Gaston. Phil John Deville.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Rowland. I rise tonight to speak about three ideas that we might want to take to heart as a community. Idea number one, sunlight is the best disinfectant. Number two, if we want positive change, we should work to make the invisible visible. And finally, social media, memos, and emails are frequently more harmful than helpful, and so the path to restoration of trust lies with frequent in-person face-to-face public meetings. What prompted the beginning of these thoughts was the joint meeting that you all had, the county commissioners had, with the Macon County Board of Education and the Fine Arts Center on May 28th, where there was substantial contentiousness between the two governing bodies. And it was close at that time, but there was notice in both the Board of Education and County Commission meetings over frustrations over the MOUs, the Memorandum of Understanding, where ironically, there was doubt on both... On the part of both governing bodies about who was responsible for what. And we can go back for over two decades to see substantial contentiousness between the two governing bodies when it comes to the school board's budget and the school system's request for capital outlay and current operating expense funding. And the fact that this contentiousness goes back for over 20 years tells me that it has very little to do with any particular individual or individuals, that rather, the problem is with the structural and the functional relationship between these two governing bodies. So how might we overcome this contentiousness? How might the two governing bodies work together better for the good of Macon County students, their families, and our communities? I have here an editorial from the Franklin Press from August 28th, which demands, quote, "Conduct the public's business in public." I strongly endorse that idea, and I greatly appreciate the Franklin Press calling that to our attention. The press is speaking about liaison meetings between the two governing bodies, which apparently have not been open to the public, the press, for which no notices have been given, no minutes taken, and been distributed. I hope that the two governing bodies heed the call of the Franklin Press and amend their approach to liaison meetings accordingly, because I firmly believe that sunlight is the best disinfectant. I've attended almost every major budget meeting for the past 25 years. And for those 25 years, I hear questions asked if budget requests are really being made in good faith on the part of the school system, if fund balances are being accurately depicted, if the needs are genuine, if the funds are really helping the classroom, helping the individual student. And to that end, I ask here this evening that Macon County schools publish an update on an ongoing basis, their revenues, their expenditures, and the salaries on the Internet that should be published on an ongoing basis, all in an effort to foster trust between the school system and the county commissioners who provide so much of our funding, and to foster trust between the school system and the taxpayers from whom the essential dollars flow. We must make the invisible visible to foster trust. And finally, I'm asking both bodies to commit to meeting at least once a quarter, all year round, on a face-to-face basis. Commissioner Young made that very suggestion at the May 28th meeting. Commissioner Shields made that meeting back when he served on the school board, and if you go back through the Franklin Press archives, that suggestion about meeting once a quarter between the two governing bodies, it's there at least a half dozen times over the past 25 years. I'd like for these two bodies to adopt that practice. I firmly believe that the path to restoration of trust is with frequent in-person face-to-face public meetings. Tomorrow is the 23rd anniversary of September 11th. Chairman Shields and I were together that day, and we spoke at length in the days and weeks and months after. One thing that we all remember from that horrible moment in the days and weeks and months that came after the attack on our country is that we were able, for an all-too-brief moment, to put aside our differences and to come together. We publicly came together. We were honest about what we needed, and we met neighbor to neighbor, elected official to elected official. And so this evening, in the spirit of the national camaraderie that we experienced in the months immediately after 9/11, I hope we can reclaim that spirit and put it to serving our children, our families, our communities, a little bit better. I thank you all for your service. Mr. Rowland, thank you very much for your service. Good luck and Godspeed. Good night.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
D O T Y. Doty, doty. There you are. You're making it. Tell me what your first name is.
Marcia.
Marcia, okay.
I'm just here tonight as a concerned citizen with regards to animal control. I know we're down a staff member there, and I suggest we need actually two more staff members. I know that we've... I think in the past, we've had up to four. But one of the things that is not able to be done with the staff that we have now, even if we add one, is investigating things like dogfighting. And I know no dogfighting happens in this county. I've heard it from the previous people in animal control. And with dogfighting, drugs, and comes gangs. So if we have a strong animal control presence, we're less likely to open that up to gangs and more drugs. So I just wanted to give that edge to it, because it's not just about taking care of the dogs and cats and whatever else that we have here. It's about keeping out particular criminal elements, which we've managed to keep at a very low level, if at all, here in this county. And I don't know if people think about animal control in terms of deterring gang violence and more drugs. So I just wanted to put that in front of you all, because if you could have somebody in animal control... I mean, I... Right now, I was a substitute teacher for years here, and now I drive part-time for Amazon, and I've definitely come across places where it was pretty clear they were breeding dogs for fighting, but you can't prove it unless you catch them fighting. And you can't catch them fighting unless you have someone investigating that. And they certainly... I mean, they... It's all they can do to keep... Take care of the dogs and cats they have now up there. They don't have time to do any kind of investigating. And my sister just retired from animal control in Asheville, and, you know, unless you have enough staff to investigate stuff like that, then we'd leave ourselves open to that. So that's all I wanted, your time, and... Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Robert Seibert. That's going to be interesting, Robert, what I can see here.
I'm Robert Seibert with the American Legion District 25, which covers from Brevard West here in North Carolina. I'm also the commander at Post 532 in Hayesville. I have been informed, at least, that when the National Guard left, they left the building and things to the county. Out at the old National Guard building, there is a 3-inch 50 caliber gun that is setting and not being cared for, and we would like to request that you donate it to our post, that we might take it and move it and care for it and display it. It is dated 1942 on it, so it would be a World War II memorabilia. And so I've come to ask that the commission, if they have no plans to use that or to keep it up, if they would donate that to our post.
Who's the owner of it?
My understanding is the county is. It went with the building.
A 50 caliber?
Is it the gun out front?
Yes, sir.
It's the... It's kind of the statue we have down there.
It's out under the tree, yes.
Is it workable?
No. Thank you. It's yard art.
Okay. I was saying it's going to be interesting, because I'm familiar with 50 caliber and what it can do.
No, they've welded the input shut and some other things that are off.
Oh, good.
That's the end of my request.
Mr. Rowland, where do we go from here?
I told him that that was up to you, gentlemen.
Let me ask you this. I mean, are you talking about moving it maybe to our Veterans Park here in Franklin? Or are you talking about taking it out of county?
I'm asking to take it out of county to Clay County.
No, I'd have a hard time. I wouldn't mind seeing it at our Veterans Park here. I just hate to see it go across county lines, but I'm just speaking for myself.
Well, if all I do is promote you to get it to your memorial park, then I'm happy for that.
And I think that's a great idea. And I think you're on to something there. I mean, in all seriousness, but...
My understanding was that, for the most part, nobody even remembered that they had it, and there were no plans to do that, and so I thought, why not ask?
You know, I appreciate you coming. Nothing else.
I'd really like to see that moved to that park there.
That's the end of my request.
At the V... I say you with the American Legion?
I'm with the American Legion in Hayesville.
In Hayesville.
But I'm also district commander, which encompasses Franklin as well.
I'm with the VDA. Let me bring this up with them. See that now? Where's it located? Where's it located?
At the Armory.
At the Armory, in your industrial park.
Can't miss it. It's right out front.
Dang, you have to miss it.
It's a yard art. It's up...
I've got a photo if you want to see it.
No, I'll go have a look at it.
You probably ran it.
Thank you for bringing to our attention.
Thank you.
It's up to us to move it to the next level.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mary Ann. Mary Ann Ingram, excuse me.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mary. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you for lending me speak, and I'm going to take a different view of the changing of ordinances regarding flood plan and soil erosion in Macon County. How many of you gentlemen were born in Macon County?
Born in Jackson County, but mama went across the line.
Mama went across the line.
And then came back.
Damn, that's what happens. Well, what I want to say is, I am the Lorax, and I speak for the trees and all of these, the animals, the four-leggeds, not just the two-leggeds. I am speaking for the water, the rocks in the water that keep oxygen for the animals that are in that water, for the fish, for the mussels. I speak for the winged ones who fly over it, keeping it safe, the bald eagle, the blue herons that bring their family down through that river. Think about that. Your bodies are made from this soil. This water runs through your veins. I was not born here, but I love it when I drive into work and see that the glorious mountains and the green of the trees. It's tree on tree, and the light comes out. And you gentlemen sit here, and you're going to have the power to change and either weaken or improve the ordinances to protect our land and our water for all of these, for your grandchildren. And if you choose to soften your resolutions to make it easier to destroy this land, I am so sorry for your grandchildren. And those who have come before you upon this land, who are buried here, are saying, "Guys, protect it. Don't sell out. Protect it. Care for it." That's my mission here, too, and I wasn't born here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Thank you. I'm pointing at Miss Nana Hala because you'll have to hit me on that name again. You did a while ago.
It's Heavenly.
Oh, I like that. Heavenly, all right.
Gentlemen, thank you. On behalf of the Nana Hala Development Community Club, first of all, thank y'all so much for the support and the help that y'all gave us in getting our new building over there, along with the new library. Very much appreciated, and we can't thank y'all enough. So here I am, asking for something else for the community club. We would like to put a Veterans Memorial Stone out by the club there with the library, where the flags were put up, and we are just asking for the board's assistance or the commissioner's assistance with that. I gave a proposal that I got... I don't think I gave you one, Mr. Young, sorry. For a memorial stone with a cost of about $600, and we're just asking if the commissioners could assist us with that. We'd really appreciate it.
I think we still have funds, according to our finance director, in that project.
We still have funds in the project.
I've got a pile of rocks. If you could pick one out.
You got a big enough one, and it looks good. I'll come get it.
Got it.
That was a 50 caliber machine gun.
I want to go look at it first.
I was going to say, Mr. Shields will see that before you guys do anything with that first. I've had experience with 50 cal myself, and it's...
Have you people here ever shot a 50 caliber?
Anytime.
I can't hear what you're saying.
Exactly. I'm lucky I can hear. But that's what we're asking for, just a little help with a memorial over there for the Nana Hala veterans.
Do we need a motion on that? Or consensus?
Is it for $600?
Yes, I got a quote for $600 to include lettering and the base and the stone itself.
There's a couple other items, serving tables and the picture framing that we did, just accessories for the community club.
Oh, we're in the better.
We have sufficient funds in the project.
We're in the better.
I can give you a copy. I can order it, or I can give you their number.
I think we...
We can coordinate.
We just have a consensus where Laura is saying that she can cover the cost of it.
Yeah, if you want to email that to me.
No new money. It's money that's allocated for the...
For the building already.
Make a motion now.
I'll make... Yeah, I'll make a motion, Senator.
I'll second it. Any more discussion? I'm in agreement.
Heavenly, thank y'all. Shirley.
Thank you.
Y'all done a good job over there. And appreciate what y'all communities done for that little facility over there.
We're still working on it, but we couldn't have done it without the school or the county commissioners.
You can't have it.
Would you be in a Z?
Y'all would have done it.
Thank you, Ann.
Shirley, it's getting dark. Be careful.
We got to get across the line.
Let's see. Where are we going here? If Ann's on, can you pass this back over to me? Now, let's see. That was all of the public comment. There's somebody out here where Ms. need to add to the...
John's not here. Oh, yeah.
Who?
10A. 10A? The Sales Tag.
No, John and I talked today. We've taken that from the agenda tonight.
Okay.
The 10A is the... We're regrouping.
Okay. So we'll need to remove that. Action.
Old business 10A.
The Sales Tag.
Update on the Course at Sales Tag. John Knipple, we talked today.
Should we just table it, or just remove it?
On those two words that we're still a little nervous about.
Yep.
And he and I talked today. He's going to present me... He's going to email me the plan, and I'll share it with y'all, but it's... and I'll share it with y'all, but it's not the night to kick it off.
Yep.
You want a motion to approve? Are you okay?
Yes.
There we go. 10B.
10B.
10B. Doug Johnson.
Oh, yeah, there he is. There he is, Doug.
Hello, Doug.
Hello, everyone. Gentlemen, appreciate you letting me be here tonight.
I think we need a motion and a vote to remove that item from the agenda.
And I'll make the motion that we, the 10A be removed from the agenda. I thought we'd done it up there with that other one. Okay, my fault. Van Vong, second. Any more discussion? All in agreement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Doug.
Just coming before you tonight to ask for approval of the farmland preservation plan that we presented last meeting, so I assume you guys have had a chance to look it over and everything, and so...
Mr. Chairman, I was concerned when this was presented. I had no clue that anything like this was coming. So, and as I stated, I certainly didn't want to do anything that would affect our local farmers or anything in a negative way that, so I asked for this to be tabled until this month, so I could get a chance to speak with some of the farmers. And so I did speak with some of the farmers, and they have reviewed this, and so I got, I got the blessings from the farmers because they approved of this. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the Farmland Protection Plan 2024 for Macon County, North Carolina.
Is there a second?
Second.
If Van Vong, second.
Thanks for coming back.
Any further discussion? Not? All in favor? Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
All y'all.
Thank you, Doug. Appreciate you.
Kathy.
Good evening. So we're here to talk about the Macon County Billing Guide and Fee Plan. This is something that's presented to you on an annual basis. We're required to present it to you so that you can vote, and basically look at, the Billing Guide includes our eligibility requirements as well as some of the rules and regulations that we have, and then our fee plan are the fees for our services. And it includes not just, it's our clinical fees, our dental fees, our environmental health fees, and animal service fees. I know the two biggest things that I heard from last time was that you had some questions about some of how we got, came up with our clinical fees.
Yeah, I have some, I have some questions.
I've got a handout.
Okay.
Okay. This is what we call, refer to our methodology of how we determine our fees, and this is something that's been part of the Billing Guide. So as far as the clinical fees, you can see that we start with the cost of the item or test, around $100, and then we add $100 as an administration fee. So it's pretty much what's, what's our cost plus a baseline of like an administration fee.
Well...
That makes it kind of standardized for us to be able to determine what our clinical fees are.
Okay. Well, one of the things that, Ms. Kathy, the last year, when you approached this board, and of course, we approved, and I know more than made it to my truck, and my phone rang, and somebody at home was watching this meeting, and they said, Commissioner Cheryl, you even know what you voted on tonight? I said, yeah. They said, did you review it? I said, nope. It was standard procedure. And they said, we didn't elect you for standard procedure, Commissioner. We, we want you to do the people's business. So, so this year, I decided that I would try to get into this a little bit different, and the first question I had was what change in the health system that caused these rate changes? Some of these changes that you have has gone up almost 400%? And some of, or one of them at least, has decreased by 300%. And I just like clarification on what happened with these people that would cause a price on our citizens through the Health Department to increase 400%?
We are seeing a significant increase in vaccines. You know, our, things that we're purchasing, the supplies that we're purchasing, we're, you know, we're just, we're covering our cost to, to basically at a minimum for these things. It's not something that we're benefiting from as an agency.
So in one year's time, you're telling me that your cost on some of these items has increased 400, yeah, 400%?
So what, what I, are you talking about vaccines?
I have a list of the items that has increased. I have a list of the items that has decreased. Some of these things have gone up a dollar, and, I mean, some of them have gone from, let's see here, one, one in particular, $29 to $147. Item 86359 went from $29 to $147. That's an increase of 407%.
I mean, I'll be happy to supply you with the invoices that we have. I mean, you know, we, everything that goes through our billing process.
It's not, it's not really about me. It's about what the general public and the citizens of Macon County are asking for. And, and so, and, I mean, that just seems like it's excessive. And then, as I go through these items, the ones that have increased and the ones that have decreased, you had 17 items that increased, and you had 20 services that decreased. Some of these books, you go, in this price guide, you have two decreased and two increased. And it seems like there was a pattern to this thing. I didn't compare it to last year because that was water under the bridge, but I understand what you're saying with with your costs and everything else, but, I mean...
When we sit, we, when we reckon, I mean, we're passing on any savings that we can onto the, onto the fee for the, our patients. So when we see, have a decrease, then we lower the price.
Okay. So, and you gave me the methods that were used for the increases and decreases, but were any of these changes caused by the ability or the inability for the citizens of Macon County to pay? And where I'm going with this question is the fact that there, and I'll get into this a little bit, but if you have a service that you're, that you're providing that people can't pay for, and then we get into the write-offs and all this other stuff, are we trying to rebuild the revenue from those services to cover things that are not being paid for?
No, that, we're not, we can't do that.
Okay.
We do have some programs that have a sliding fee scale where, you know, the, the patient comes in based on their income, makes them eligible for certain discounts.
Okay, so as I go into your operating procedure, on page six, limiting or restricting services due to inability to pay. Do you have that in front of you?
Page six.
It says here, "No one shall be denied clinical services based solely on the inability to pay." I'm going to stop right there. Then I'm going to go to the next page on item number six, Fee Waiving Process. Macon County Health Director has the authority to waive clients' fees of individuals who, for good cause, are unable to pay. I'm going to go to the next page, and it says, Bad Debt Write Off and North Carolina Debt Setoff. And as you read through that, the bad debt write-off, outstanding accounts having no activity in more than 12 months shall be written off as bad debts, at least annual upon approval of Macon County Board of Health and the Macon County Commission. And then you go to the next page, and it says, Request for No Mail of Outstanding Debts. When a client requests no mail discussions of payments of outstanding debt shall occur at the time service is rendered. So, to me, all of those things are contradicting itself. You cannot refuse someone for their inability to pay.
Solely.
Solely, okay? And then, they don't pay their bill, and then you, and then they come back for services again, and you cannot do that. You can't refuse their, and then they sign this thing that, that requests for no mail?
As for confidential services.
Right. And so, to me, it's almost like all this is contradicting itself, telling people, don't pay your bill, they're not coming after you. And so that's why I was concerned about some of these fees increasing, is it people that actually are paying, and we're just trying to get more money to offset the ones that are not. I mean, these are just...
Our fees are based on our cost.
So basically, this year, we went in the hole on some of these services that we're providing because we weren't charging enough.
We were, we tried to respond to what the market prices immediately, and that's what we asked to have included in the Billing Guide, is so that we could respond more quickly to the adjustment in costs. So that's what we're doing.
Okay. And so the ones that you've actually reduced, we have charged more than we should have in this past year?
We've experienced a decrease in the cost, and we've passed that on to the patient.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Eligibility. Can you clarify what best practice means?
Best practice is a stab and evidence-based program or service or, you know, initiative.
It says, in identification, it is considered best practice for each person presenting for services to establish their identity, either with a birth certificate, driver's license, military ID, passport, visa, or green card. Does that, are you telling me that if you don't have any of these items here, you cannot get services through Macon County Health Department?
No, that's, there's some programs that require that verification, and there's, you know, we're not talking about every single service in our, like, for example, environmental health, we don't ask for a license to prove who you are. We take your application.
Right.
You know, so there's, but there's some required, some programs that require those types of identification for...
So I guess it goes right back down to the fact that if, if you're an undocumented person in this country, what, the way I'm reading this is you're not eligible for...
We have many programs that undocumented individuals can receive those services.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I think the last thing that, that I have a question for in this guide, and I have, and I'd like for you to, and this has to do with animal services. Citation, option number one, $25.
Can you tell me what page you're on?
I'm on page, I don't know, it's in a very, it's the next to the last page. It don't have a page number on it.
Okay. Okay.
You got it? On the animal services?
Next to the last page?
Well, it's, yeah, I mean, in my, in my guide, you have, it's front and back, so...
Okay, that one. Okay.
Let me know when you find it.
Yeah.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Animal Services Citation Option One, $25. Citation Option Two, $50, at officer's discretion. Would you clarify that, please? Because that's a broad, and that's not...
And I don't have the information about what Citation One is and what Citation Two is in front of me.
Yeah, I have a problem with the, at the officer's discretion, and...
Well, there's some, some circumstances, you know, that, that, they are continuously trying to work with the residents to make sure that the animals are taken care of, and that they're working with pet owners. If there's progress being made, they can see progress being made. They can wa, they not waive it, but not charge the citation if, if they're seeing progress being made, because they go back and, and observe it. So there, there are options to try to work with pet owners to do, to move towards a better. It may take them a little bit longer. It's, it's even, it's similar to what a repair would be like in environmental health. As long as they're, we're seeing progress and we're having movement towards the improvement that we're hoping for, you know, then we, we may not make the next step. So that's, that's their discretion.
Okay. As long as, I mean, there are some cases that, at an officer's discretion, that that is abused, and that's, that's my, I'm not saying anything about animal services or anything in Macon County. There are times when personal grudges and stuff like that will affect a professional's decision to enforce the, okay? That's all I have on, on the, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion?
I'm good with the clinical part. Ms. Kathy, you and I have been for years over environmental health fees. Can we approve the clinical without the environmental health, or just one or all?
Yes, you can do that, but I would like to provide some information about the environmental health, if we can talk about that for a minute.
Because I've got a crazy idea.
I know you do, and, and I'm, you know, I think it's a discussion, a discussion. So, and you've seen most of this information as our liaison.
It'll take me a little while to sign for this.
Yeah, I know, and I can explain it pretty easily.
You want me to tell you what my idea, latest version is?
What is? Go ahead. Knock me out.
I've talked about this for 15 years, about environmental health fees, and we as a board, each month or each year, we take in a few million dollars in fund balance, been to four to six million. Lori, correct me if I'm wrong.
It just varies from year to year. Of course, we're about, we're spending 20 million, so keep that in mind.
We spend a lot. We take in four to six million each year on, and add to our fund balance, and then through the year, we, we spend a lot of that, you know, for various programs. And a lot of the things that we do are for government functions, whatever it may be, necessary government functions. But in thinking, you know, what have we done? And we do have a low tax rate, and I very appreciate... But in thinking, you know, what have we done, and we do have a low tax rate, and I'm very appreciative of that, the people who directly invest in Macon County, what have we done for them broadly in the last 12 years I've had the pleasure of sitting in this chair? And I would like to get two or three people together, you included, like, seats you have in it, is to do a pilot program, as I think someone mentioned to me. I don't mind the county doing a pilot program, because we never evaluate programs, we never stop a program we started, so... But right now, you're taking in about $250,000 a year. That's for wells.
That's a yellow column.
And of course, we, and that's a lot of money. But that money does not affect your employees being paid. You're gonna get paid regardless where the money comes from. I'm just, I'd like to get three or four of us together, come back in October, and let me make a, make a, make a motion. Y'all may not agree with me, but it's just the board's responsibility to fund programs, pay employees, and to keep these services going. Well, what would it do if we said, "Okay, folks, if you're willing to buy a piece of property in Macon County, if you're willing to invest in a house, or if you're willing to put money directly into the economy..." And a lot of people fail to understand what these environmental health services mean. Before you can start anything, you've gotta go through that, to get your permits, to get your building permits, to employ many laborers by building materials and, and stimulate the economy in some fashion. What would it do? How hard would it be for us to justify waiving those fees? But you've got a guideline, you just can't let me, about 20 or 30 acres of land, go and say, "I want 10 permits." We can't do that. We have to have checks and balances and bumpers, and that's what I would like to meet with you all about, just to share that. But it's $250,000 a year.
Right.
That's not gonna break our budget, it's not gonna affect your ability to pay your employees, but it's just kind of a tip of our hat to those people who directly invest and do something to stimulate a little bit of our economy, our building economy. Our construction is a big, is a big part of Macon County's economic development. So, I would be willing to make a motion to approve the clinical request in your fee adjustments, preserving the environmental health fees, leaving them as they are now, because right now, you're wanting to cut them a little bit next year. I mean, your proposal was to cut some of them. So you're not gonna lose any income, we're not gonna lose any revenue by leaving where they're at until we can meet and kind of look, see if we could do a pilot program with proper protocol so that you're not flooded, you're short-staffed, you're always gonna be short-staffed, and don't wanna flood them, we don't wanna let them keep up. So, with that, I make the motion, we approve the clinical, set aside environmental health fees, and I will call Catherine, we'll set up a meeting. I don't hate to make that motion, that's my motion.
I, I feel somewhat obligated to talk about some of the, the comments that... I'm sorry.
I'll second, I'll second that motion.
That the board of health members have already, you know, looked into this quite a bit, and, you know, Paul's our liaison, I, I just feel like, you know, their, their intent, as they were looking at the fees, was to protect passing on the cost of some of these services to the taxpayer. I mean, that was one of the, the discussion points when we, we talked about that. I mean, you were there for part of that conversation. And, you know, we, we talked about how if we did lower the fees or eliminate the fees with such an idea, how flooding of, of applications coming in would be of a big concern. And, you know, people, just because they can, coming in and getting, so we would have to figure out a way...
It has to be a contract-based program. If you have a contract to purchase a piece of property, you need a permit. If you close on the property, we waive the fees. If you've got a building, you've got a contractor, and you've got a contract to build a house, we waive them. It's not for speculators or whomever. But there's ways we can do this, just to say, "Thank y'all for investing. Thank you all for creating and employing opportunity for a lot of people in Macon." There's a lot of, if you're not out in the construction industry, you really don't grasp the impact of what a environmental health septic system permit allows other, many other people in Macon County to be gainfully employed.
And I...
Build those houses, it adds to max base, land transfer fees, I mean, stim, it is a stimulant.
And how that ties to building inspection fees, I don't...
I sold them away too.
Oh, there you go.
That's $100,000 a year. It costs us a million dollars a year to waive all fees related to building, construction.
So, you know, it's, it's your decision, you know...
And let me address that, that those people should pay for their services. What about the sheriff's office? What about Department of Social Services? Government provides services, and very few of them are self-sustaining.
I mean, we're not self-sustaining, that's for sure. We're not close to coming, covering our costs. We're at about, you know, 20, 26% right now covering our costs.
The only department that's in that, no government agency can pass their cost alone to the public, other than through taxes to sustain your programs. But this is something I'd like to have a discussion about.
I think it's worthwhile to just, you know, look at what we can do.
And I'd like to nominate Joe Allen to be part of that committee.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Anyway, that's my motion, gentlemen. We got a second on it? Mr. Schill?
On the clinic fees.
So the clinic, would it include the, the dental fees, lab fees, the clinic fees, the animal control fees?
Yes, every clinical, everything except environmental health, at your will, food and lodging.
And we'll keep going with what we currently have until we decide what this is. Very clear.
Everything happens as, as it is right now, until the result of this meeting, board of health kicks it around. I don't mind having a discussion before we go.
You want to bail with?
I'll second.
No.
I'll wait a little. I've got a motion to second.
Any further discussion? All in agreement, raise your hand.
In your half way through our center.
Oh, thank you. Just have you say, "Come back next time." That was great. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you, once y'all are good.
I don't know.
Going new business, going new business.
Mr. Rowland?
Oh, yeah, since y'all's...
This is y'all's baby.
I've got 20 minutes.
Mr. Gibbs, are we in the, or Mr. Bree Love, are we in the relocation Franklin High School? Are we in that conversation now?
According to your judgment, Mr. Schill, that appears correct, yeah.
Okay.
We're in that, and...
Is there something else, Mr. Rowland?
No, we, that'll be, we'll hit that first. And I think, you know, we're pleased to have with us school board representation tonight, including Chairman Bree Love and Ms. Lauster and Coach Gibbs, and who else we got, oh, Ms. Buriden and, and Hillary. Good to see y'all with us tonight. So I think, Mr. Schill's, if one of some, one of those representatives would like, I think, you know, this came about, of course, we are in the process of constructing the new Franklin High School. As part of that, as you know, we're going to have an active campus during this construction. And with that being said, the phases in which this project is happening, it's going to entail some demolition of, of areas that, that are being used right now. One of these includes the weight room. And so the question has become, what to do with the weight room during this project? We've discussed some options, and, and I think the school board is, is here tonight to present an option to this board for consideration that has resulted from these discussions. So, Coach Gibbs, will you have you with us?
Thank you, Mr. Rowland. County commissioners, I appreciate you guys having us. Of course, at the end of football season, Carol Daniels will start working, pushing around dirt at the football field, which will take, take out the ag building, the weight room, and the fieldhouse. And we need to come up with alternative, a different place to house the weight room. Just as a point of notice, I want to make sure that we understand that the weight room is not the football team. The football team is not the weight room. They do, they're partners, but the weight room is used all day, every day by non-athletes at Franklin High School. That's part of their instruction, "Bigger, Faster, Stronger." And there are also athletes from other sports besides football that also use the weight room. So I just want to keep that in mind. We tried to come up with a plan, once the end of football season comes and that, those buildings begin to be demolished. Tried to come up with a plan to keep BFS classes for second and fourth period on the campus of Franklin High School, for obvious reasons. We tried to make that happen with limited space, as we are now, and even less space come November. It just was not feasible to keep BFS classes on the campus of Franklin High School. So the next best option that we could come up with, and that option was discussed by coaches at Franklin High School, athletic directors, myself, our director of, manager of facilities, Tracy Talent, among other people, county commissioners, that the Macon Middle School Athletic Buildings multipurpose room was probably the next best bet for the weight room for the BFS program. With that being said, there are some needs to make that happen. For example, a rubber flooring in that multipurpose room will keep that floor usable even after BFS is not there in a couple of years. We'd also need some sort of transportation out from Franklin High School to Macon Middle School, first period, second period, and fourth period every single day to get those BFS students out to the multipurpose room at the middle school. I do have some costs associated with that. The rubber flooring estimate that we got from Representative Carol Daniel, researched that and found a good option for us is a two, quad block rubber flooring. It's an inch thick. It'd be installed at the multipurpose room, and it would stay there once the BFS class were moved back to Franklin High School. That comes with a cost, that rubber flooring of $76,289.84.
How much?
$76,000.
Seventy-six?
Yes, sir. $289,084, that's installation.
Is what was the space? Five thousand in, or?
5,000 square feet, just short of 5,000 square feet.
And the thickness of it?
One inch.
Thank you.
That's the one need, the other need would be bus drivers. Fourth period BFS has 85 students in it, you could not transport those students in one bus. You'd need two buses for that. Thus, we would, and the other two class periods are not 85, but they still would require two buses. First period, two buses, second period, two buses, fourth period. Looking at, trying to find drivers, as you know, finding bus drivers is a very difficult thing. If we could hire a couple of bus drivers that we currently have to do those, that BFS driving in between their morning route and their afternoon route, that would make them full-time. So it'd be $48,866.66 per driver. We would need two drivers for two years. So it'd be 50, I'm sorry, $96,000, $97,000 per year for two drivers, now multiply that by two years.
Why two years?
That's what the estimated building duration is to have the fieldhouse, the new fieldhouse online at the new Franklin, as a football field.
I was thinking of winning the gym, weight room, so the weight room goes outside.
Well, no, they've got, they've got provisions for the fieldhouse to house a weight room temporarily, and then once the gym is built, move out weight room there, and then it would be storage for the field at the fieldhouse.
The only other thing I have to ask is, the teachers and coaches have to get there. I mean, I have to ask.
They're gonna ride with kids on the buses.
Would it not be a little more economical for them to drop the bus?
It would be. What we're worried about is when they have, when they're out, when they have teacher-parent conferences that go over, if something comes up, then we're in kind of a pickle then.
What about students that are called, parents call them in, they have to leave school?
Those questions are probably better answered by Franklin High School on the nuts and bolts of that. From what I've heard before is, if a student knows that they're gonna be leaving halfway through the period, they'll go to ISS, chill out, and wait to be checked out then.
So they wouldn't go to the class?
No. If they're called out, then their parents are gonna have to go to Macon Middle School and pick them up there.
And they're dressing, redressing, showering?
At Macon Middle School, in the athletic, the new athletic building.
A portable structure is not feasible for this on campus?
Space is of an issue, is an issue. I, I've asked that, and I've been told that there's not any space left because of the construction.
Did you get a total cost from this? I saw a time for two years, or?
$90, $97,000 per year. That'd be 100 and...
For your bus driver?
Yes, sir. That'd be 190, 194,000 for two years. Plus the 76, would be 270?
Todd, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Football season ends sometime November, could go longer if they playoffs, right? So, you say it's $97,000 a year, is that a school year, August to May?
Just a school year, just during the school year, so it would be a little bit less.
This wouldn't start until November, maybe December?
Correct.
We only budget one year at a time, y'all only budget one year at a time. So, I'm assuming you're here tonight to ask this board to fund this, but to me, we need, we need a number for this budget year.
Okay.
And not, you know, a full year and a second year at this point in time. Now, the rubber flooring, I guess that's an immediate need. But to me, you know, if, if you guys are gonna fund this, we need just the number for this budget year, not, you know, two full years.
The 25, the 25 year?
Just current budget year working in now on the bus drivers, so...
Can you, have you got that on a computer?
I, I can, when we're done talking, I can go back, use my calculator and figure out about what it's gonna be.
And of course, as we move into this project, I meant to announce this at the beginning, but we kind of, our, our debt for Franklin High School was approved today by the local government commission, so, yay! Of course, we have the $62 million grant in place, and we sell the bonds in the morning. So praying for good interest rates in the morning, hopefully, there's some CPI and other reports coming out in the morning, so hopefully, they're good news, and, you know, hopefully, we have some good, a good bond sale in the morning, and of course, we'll be reporting back with those rates later. But anyway, I just wanted to throw that in there. So, I'm saying all that to say, right now, of course, the whole funding for Franklin High School is not in place. You know, we have the guaranteed maximum price, there is some contingency built in. But until we issue the bonds, close the deal later this month, you know, and have funding in place, and at the October board meeting, I would have to bring back a capital project ordinance to appropriate and fund the whole Franklin High School project. So, to me, the rubber flooring sounds like an action item maybe for tonight. But, and I don't want to speak for Carol Daniel, but could the bus driver piece come out of some of our contingency, or would you rather not do that this early in the game? I'm just throwing it out there. But I guess Carol Daniel, Emily, I see you shaking your head no, so please chime in.
I mean, I think it's, it could be six of one, half a dozen of the other, but we've got a lot of project in front of us, and contingency is there to protect the, that project when unforeseen conditions come up. So I'm always nervous to tap into that before we've started. But I also think it's worth a conversation with Carol Daniel because we... a conversation with Carol Daniel, because we have been tracking previously allowances to help with the facilitation of the relocation of the weight room. And so, I'm not a hundred percent clear what might still be left in the GMP accounting to resolve that, and so, I think there's some fact-finding that we could still do before we decide that there isn't funds already available that have been accounted for in some manner to make this all happen the way it needs to.
Yeah. Like, is it, from what I've, I've heard, very little about this, but from what I understand, the rubber flooring needs to be ordered now. It's an immediate need, and since all the funding's not lined up and in place, I think tonight, that would be the action item, would be to appropriate for the flooring, and I think the bus driver issue can wait, because again, the bus drivers won't be needed till sometime in November, potentially December, so, you know, we've got October board meeting, we could consider all this, and that would give Emily, Carol Daniel, maybe some time to work through, to see, could that come from contingency? If not, then, you know, have that number for our board of, okay, from this date to this date, it's this many drivers, this many hours, it's going to cost this much money, and, you know, to me, the board could consider that.
I have a question. Why, why wasn't this part of the original project? Why is this separate?
Danny, to answer your question, I think we have been accounting for it in some manner as part of the project. From the beginning, that's been part of the discussions, is about where does, where does the weight room need to be relocated? It's a summer conversation that we've already had with the ag program, which, which did get relocated this summer already, because those buildings are going to be demolished early on too. So, I would love a slight reprieve from today's meeting to track that back through with Carol Daniel, and to make sure that it isn't still accounted for in the GMP in some manner. So, it has been part of the conversations and part of the early budgeting to include relocation of the weight room. We just, at the time, didn't know exactly what that solution was going to be.
Well, if it's part of, if it's already part of it, why is there an additional two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand that's needed for this?
And I don't know that it needs to be, that's what I'm saying, is I think that I want to go back through Carol Daniel's accounting and their, and their guaranteed maximum price to confirm what happened to the line items that we had been carrying in previous estimates for the relocation of the track, or not the track, the relocation.
Can we not wait till we confirm that before we try taking any action on this?
I, I mean, I would be happy to do that unless there's some urgency, Todd, in terms of ordering them.
There is urgency. There's a thirty-day lead-in time for the rubber flooring squares.
Just an idea from left field, I talked to Phil Drake about leasing his space down there, Jim Azim.
I don't know if anybody spoke to him about that.
Is that walking distance?
I mean, the floor, floors are have to, if they're going to have weights in there, it doesn't matter if it's middle school or high school.
But I believe, we'll see Joey, Joey Kane, Joey's CM at Risk person, now, he was in that meeting the other day, he was, seemed like he was, it was very important that we go ahead and get this flooring ordered, because the timeframe on that, it's going to run in the next semester, right?
The square, the square piece had a thirty-day lead-in time, the rollout had a six-week.
Six weeks.
Forty-five days, yes, is what I understand.
Which one is this?
This one is the thirty-day lead-in, these are squares.
I wanted to take the checks, see if this is already in.
I mean, I'm communicating, I'm trying to reach someone.
Seems like that would have been done before, approached the board for extra funds.
Yeah, I didn't.
Is it going to be every month, if something else has come up, or is this, I mean, I've been a little critical of this project, and didn't support the new school, but in the current location, but planning is important.
You're going to have to have that, if you're going to move to the middle school, you've got to have the flooring, the inch flooring, and, because you can't move any kind of weights or anything until you get the flooring done.
You can, but you're going to destroy the flooring, it's there.
Well, I, I mean, is this not a school function, or is this a county function? The weight room, how does that translate into county government versus a county school problem? Because, I mean, now we're talking about, I mean, I don't, I don't understand why the funds are expected for us based on our school function.
Well, I don't want to get too much into weeds, I'm just making a really clear point. This, to me, should have been part of the project, there shouldn't have been an additional cost in this. So, there should have been a planning situation on like, keeping that on campus. There's no, there's nowhere on campus that this weight room can go?
No. They, they really wanted to have it on campus, both the administration and the coaches. For example, there was talk of having it, one of the ideas thrown out there was using half of the library. We have eighty-five kids in fourth period BFS, so you can't put eighty-five kids in there lifting weights. You have to have somewhere outside also. Eighty-five kids with half the campus in construction, especially the open fields, where are you going to put the rest of the eighty-five kids that are not lifting weights at that time?
I mean, that makes sense, but why was that not thought out to add to the project initially? Does, am I making a sincere?
I can't speak on that, I don't, I don't know.
I think space, we did it for agriculture, like the agriculture, the Quonson Hutter, we did that for the agriculture people, and, but to do that for the weight room, I, I think we always had the idea that we were going to go to middle school, right?
That was one of the options discussed.
Yeah, and, and it didn't, to me, it didn't deviate from that option until we had our meeting, and the media center came up, and a few days later, it went back to the middle school. So, and, and also, along with the middle school, whatever you put in the middle school with the weights and stuff, it stays there. So, it's going to enhance that program too.
Yes, sir. That's what I understand.
So, and that's what we were kind of tying both of them together, that you had, what you were going to leave was going to enhance their program over there. And so, trying to follow, I, I think we were really forced to get the agriculture building between the gym and, and the media center. I think space is what you really found over there, that you didn't, you don't have, when this project starts moving dirt, you don't have the space. And, so, I think you really, you looked at the media center, it didn't work. So, this here is the, I think in the back of my mind, in my mind too, as a liaison at the middle school was going to accommodate the, the weight program, and, but I didn't figure in some of those things until we started talking that day. You talk about bus drivers, and, and the money that's going to cost for that, and putting equipment and stuff in there, but the equipment stays there, it stays there for their program. So, I don't know how you dodge this bullet, if you do, or you just commit to, hey, let's, let's go ahead and put this piece together. Yeah, we may not have planned for it appropriately, but let's just go ahead and put it together, because they're going to go somewhere, and after, after Christmas, that's somewhere in, in the, it needs to be in place, because you've got, what'd you say, a hundred and fifty students?
I'm not sure of the exact numbers, but eighty-five, one class out of three, correct.
And then, if you look at, what are you going to do with them? What are you going to do with those students?
Move this along a little bit, so, I feel like we, we put down cheap, stick-on vinyl floor. It's not like we put down really nice floor, and then we're taking it up and we're losing the money, so I feel like it's an investment. The one thing I'm concerned with is the men's and women's wrestling programs, along with middle school. Didn't we build that, design that building where the perimeter, you can have the racks and all the weights, and you can still lay out two mats?
I don't know that we designed it that way, but I believe, after looking at it and measuring it and talking about it with the athletic direction coaches, that that is an absolute possibility, for sure.
Just want to make sure we don't step on our own toes, but look, I don't, it's, it's right now September, I feel like we don't have a lot of time. I feel like we need Emily to do a little more digging into this, but I don't mind to make a motion to approve the funds contingent upon the discovery of, of what Carol Daniel has already implemented in the, in the project. So, at this time, make a motion contingent upon the funding already in the project, seventy-six thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents for rubber flooring to middle school.
I second that. Me and the liaison, we're, we're both there, seeing the, how this, how this is working, and we're, we're familiar with it, so I'll second it.
So, working on approving the mats, but not the drivers yet?
Right. The drivers can wait. From what I'm hearing, the mats need to be ordered because of the lead time, but the driver situation can wait.
September, if, if ball season ends in October, you don't have time.
And why would you wait? I mean, it's going to have to happen anyway.
Because it could come out of contingency that's already in the project. And the project, at our October meeting, you will be approving the resolu, the ordinance that appropriates the sixty-two million and the seventy-whatever million of long proceeds to fund the whole project.
Wouldn't the seventy-six thousand be the same?
It came today because the project's not funded and approved.
Right.
So, that's why we're doing it tonight, because they're saying it's an urgent need to order these, this rubber flooring.
So, if they, if they find out that those funds were part of this, is the county going to be reimbursed for the seventy-six thousand dollars for the mats?
Well, we'll get it back at the end of the project if we don't use it, I mean, or you can adopt a reimbursement resolution and choose to reimburse for expenditures, but we haven't done that.
Always at the end of the project, or when we assess what?
Paul said, you take it from your left pocket, put it in your right.
Josh, would you mind amending your motion to make it seventy-six thousand two-hundred-and-ninety dollars even? Would that be okay?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
And you said from general fund balance, right, Josh?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
This is, ordering this is going to be the easy part.
Who's going to order it?
Joey, I'd say Joey Kane.
Carol Daniel, are we going to modify your contract, your summer work contract to order it, or?
Joey Kane said the other day, he said, we can order this for you.
Yeah, we've got to pay them for that, we need to, we need to order, it's our project.
This is, this Franklin High School's supposed to flow through the county, so it'd either be the county or the GM, the CM at Risk, so I'm just trying to clarify.
This is a different project, this is an independent project at Macon Middle. Todd, Tracy, school board needs to order this, we don't pay Carol Daniel for this. Am I right now? Todd, or are we going to contract Carol Daniel for this?
If that's y'all's wish and desire.
He offered to the other day.
It's not for free.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, but I don't know what it would be if it, if we sought it out, but what it would, he was sitting.
I've, I've got the specs, I, I've got the company, I can call them and say, price it to me, and we'll find out which, which is lower.
I think we need to try one of our local vendors as well. Same floor.
Is there a timeframe on this?
Is this flooring, I'm sorry, just to try to, is this flooring that rolls out and is movable?
No, this is squares that interlock together.
Okay, but it is movable.
So, it is movable, but it's not like you want to transport all the time.
Right. But just given, given the amount of money, I would definitely want to see three quotes on it, you know, three comparable quotes for, you know, apples-to-apples quotes of the, the items, so.
But time's not on our side, so how fast is it, how fast does it take to get the three quotes?
I can start working on that tomorrow, as soon as I get to work, and hopefully I can get that by the end of the week.
So, you're going to retract your motion in a second to, until you get the quotes, or you're going to continue on with seventy-six thousand?
No, I'm going to continue on, and we'll see, we'll update it when time comes.
Yeah, if it comes in less, you can always amend the budget to lower the appropriation.
We need to get some of the motion.
Yeah, if we get something, if you approve it tonight, the budget at seventy-six two-ninety, then at least we know that's one quote you have, but you might could get a better price. At least we know that's our cap.
Well, are we looking at anything else that's like this, that's going to come up? Yeah?
Talking a hundred-and-forty-million-dollar project.
All I can tell you is, I've never done a hundred-and-forty-million-dollar project. I'm doing the best I can to try and prepare, but sometimes it takes many brains together to think of all the different aspects of what's going on, not my little puny little small brain to be able to come up with this stuff. But, but I, hey, look, this is the most uncomfortable thing to do, is us to come and ask you guys for money because of what we get back. We don't want to do this.
I don't think you're strong way. I think our frustration's geared towards the professionals we hired to help us move schools here, it's not the school board, we don't know either.
Yeah, we're a big one here.
We hired firms to do this.
But, but I'm the one presenting, and I'm the one that you guys are looking at, and I know over there too, I understand it, I got it.
But Todd, there again, we talked about this when I came on board, we hired, we got no professional developers to help you, big developers to help you guys. When I asked the question, how many people that were on this committee that are actually professional developers, and it was zero, that's where we went wrong. And, and, and I understand what you're saying, but this right here to me, it seems like we've gotten a blank check, and it's just asked for whatever's needed, and, and, and now we're going in reverse, trying to get this thing understood, and, and it's unfortunate that we did not get some people in this local community that are familiar with fifty-million-dollar projects, a hundred-million-dollar projects, so they could have overseen this and helped you. But when you take a school kid that goes around, and I'm not picking on these school kids, but when that child goes out there, absolutely, we want the prettiest, brightest school in the world, but there's a cost to that, and it needs to be somewhere along the line, it seems to me like that there's really not a whole lot of professional oversight by the community that's paying for this, and that's the problem that I think that we're facing right now. And so, it's...
To answer that a little bit, I think when we got involved with the construction management at Risk was really a professional leap, because these people build this stuff all the time, building high schools and stuff, it's, it's not the first high school, construction manager at Risk, I can see Vanoy sitting here, these, these people have been around the world with this kind of stuff. And John, you know, a lot of people in this construction, I do, I don't know if we have that type of person, or persons, that could take this project to the degree that the CM at Risk is going to take it.
Well, you've got the Drakes that were never involved.
Let's vote this thing and put down and move on.
Vanderwood that was never involved, and they would have loved to have been part of this.
Motion, I second it. Is that for the seventy-six two-ninety?
From general fund balance.
General fund balance. All right, there was a motion made, I second it. Any further discussion? If we have an agreement, this project needs to move on.
We have three?
Three, so all opposed?
Opposed?
Three, two.
Move on.
Thank you.
I'll get those other estimates for sure, at least one local.
If you can, through the email, what it may be, those things that you were numbering out, you know, like, rubber floor, transportation, bus drivers.
Do I need to email those numbers in?
Just give me a, a, a plan of what the need plan is, so I can look at that, and I'll make sure if I ask it.
Yeah, if you'll email the quotes to me when you get them, and then the bus driver thing, that'd be great. Thanks, Todd.
Just let us look at it that way, then we can check them all, if we know through it.
Absolutely.
Appreciate your job.
Yes, sir.
And are we adjourning or recessing?
Let's see where we are, where we see campus.
Eleven B.
We're Highland School project.
Highland School.
I see Mr. Vanoy, can we, can we get through the Highland School project? Hold on.
I, I really want to have some discussion about number F, and it pertains to a special called meeting.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's like, that could be included in the motion if they were going to continue it, you could just continue that to like, next to ten AM, or whatever, if that's...
But I'm concerned, we've got Vanoy here from Highland, the traveling stuff that people are doing, and just to say, we're adjourning and moving on, but...
But I believe, Mr. Shields, that the Highlands Project and the Macon Middle School Track Project, if we're going to, those two things, if we're going to post, continue this meeting, then I think those might be two things that, that need to be looked at tonight for action, or at least considered for action.
Okay, you know what you're...
But now, that's up to the board, that's, that's just me talking, y'all do whatever you want to do.
As well as the con... As well as the consent agenda, please. If we could approve the consent agenda tonight, since it's usually just a motion, a second, and an approval. Because we have budget amendments on there that may impact departments that are trying to spend grant money.
So what would actually have to be moved to a special meeting?
It'd be B and C, or you got D.
D, E, and F.
City manager, I mean, your county manager discussion. That could take an hour.
Yeah, that could be...
D should be quick. I don't know about E.
All right, let's try to fly through this. Come on.
I could get, yep, got 20 minutes. Y'all can mention 30.
I need two minutes in closed session.
All right, let's go.
All right, I got all nine.
Now, where are we with...
Highland School, 11B.
11B.
Vanoy, Emily.
Vanoy Construction.
Come on down.
Price is Right, baby.
Okay, where we plan to talk tonight is a little bit of a background presentation. Josh, at your request, to review sort of in a timeline, presentation around the course that this project has taken at Highland School. And my hope is, is that we can go through a brief summary of that that tracks along a timeline the various cost estimating and budget work that's been done, both previous to LS3P's involvement, previous to Vanoy's involvement, to get to a place where Vanoy can sort of pick up the rest of the presentation and discuss the GMP that is for your consideration. So...
Let me just ask something here for real. Can we do justice to this conversation if we're looking at the clock?
Well, that's...
20 minutes?
I mean, I think our presentation takes considerably less time than that. And to the extent that we need discussion, I think the concern that I would have around the clock and the timing is that there is a schedule that we've been trying to keep to towards construction, which is driven by when school starts in the fall and having construction complete in time to make use of new classrooms that are part of this project and considering in construction. We've approved previous early work to keep that project on schedule. And so no action tonight would impact that schedule, and we would have to just revisit what the schedule and what the finish date would be.
Me personally, I don't wanna do something in a hurry that we have to pay for later, that we missed something. Far away.
And I certainly wouldn't rush any action for that reason. I think y'all need the time that you need with the information, but I think there's useful information. Josh, this was information at your request to try to give everybody a full, comprehensive picture, because we've had this conversation ongoing. There's been some stops and starts in the project along the way. And so this is a good opportunity to get us all back sort of on an understanding of how this project has evolved over time. And so back in the early part of 2022, the Advanced Highlands Education Committee hired an advanced planning study to look at the potential for adding pre-K classrooms to the Highlands campus to meet an emerging community need for pre-K. That study resulted in the recommendation of a four-classroom addition to recoup offsetting, taking classrooms for pre-K that were in use by other grade levels and to reconstructing new classroom space to offset that use. Included in that study was renovations to three existing project labs, the media center, and some additional outdoor renovation space. Over the course of that planning study, middle school renovations were recommended by the school facilities folks that included needed HVAC replacement, roof replacement, window replacement, and flooring replacement in the existing middle school building. The elementary school classrooms and high school classrooms had been renovated in previous phase projects before that point. The result of that study was a strategic plan for how to implement that project along with a budget. As we go through this timeline, we're tracking sort of the purple number is the construction cost budget. There's a total project number in green that we're gonna track. That's sort of a legend for you as we go through this presentation. You can see what those estimated costs in the early part of 2022 were for construction and total project cost of $8.6 million. In June of 2022, y'all issued an RFQ for design services for the pre-K scope of work in the project. That excluded or didn't include at that time the middle school renovation piece, but you can see that that RFQ included the four-classroom addition, the two pre-K classrooms for renovation, project labs, media center renovation, and outdoor classroom space. And at the time, you stated that budget, which was an extrapolation of the two numbers that you see in the planning study in purple and green, the $7 million and the $8.6 million. You extrapolated a portion of that for the pre-K work to be 4.7 in construction and 5.5 in total project cost. Around the same time that LS3P was under, had assigned and executed contract for the pre-K project, you issued an RFQ for the renovation scope of the middle school building that was not included in the original RFQ. That was for the HVAC roof, windows, and flooring. At the time, you had an available amount of funding from the State Repair and Renovation Fund of $634... Or, I'm sorry, $634,000. The planning study estimated the total project cost of that work to be $2.9 million, based on that planning study in early 2022. We were under contract, as the design team, LS3P was, by early 2023 in January. But in February 2023, this board voted to stop our work on the pre-K portion of that project. We continued with only the renovation scope of that work, and in May of 2023, that project was bid. That total bid price, which is the blue number there for the HVAC replacement, window replacement, flooring replacement, roofing, which is left off that list but was included. There was some added scope to replace the controls for HVAC in that project. Your available funding for that was that $634,000. We received one bid at the time, and that bid amount was for $1.184 million. In August of 2023, y'all rejected those bids, and we sort of went back to the drawing board on that project. And no work had been done through this point on the pre-K portion of that work. In October of 2023, this board made two decisions. One, to continue the pre-K work and to incorporate the renovation scope into one project, and also to utilize a CM at-risk delivery method for the scope of work that you've listed, that I've listed here, that included all of the previous work identified in the planning study and the renovation work for HVAC roof, windows, and flooring. In March of 2024, you engaged Vanoy Construction and was under contract for CM at-risk delivery for both of those projects. We had continued to develop our design documents at that point. We initiated a whole bunch of site due diligence work to do some geotech testing and to address the logistics around removal of the existing underground oil tank that is outside of the footprint of the existing middle school where the new addition needs to be constructed. I'm gonna let you pick up from there.
Sure.
If you're good with that.
Yep. So in April time...
Thank you for being here.
Absolutely. So in April time, we delivered our DD estimate. That was a total value of $7,386,38. That was prior to any information that we had on the geotech or any other site due diligence items for the soil contamination, the underground utilities, potential water contamination. So next stop along that path was, we adjusted for the geotech based on some initial conversations with the structural engineer and with the geotechnical engineer. That number was $7,8675. Then we had the CDs come out for bid. That was just ahead of the June...
I'm gonna interrupt you for just a second.
Sure.
That meeting right there is the joint board meeting that we had in May, and that's the first time that we presented in a public forum the budget for this project, including the total project costs that included the soft costs. That's that $8.6 million number. And in that meeting, y'all voted to accept an early-phase GMP-1 for this project for $243,800, so that certain portions of the work could happen while there were no students on campus during the summer to get us ready for future construction that was anticipated to start this fall. And now you updated.
Right. So following that early boiler retrofit, site due diligence, that's when we got digging into hiring Terricon, the environmental consultant. They're the ones that did the initial site assessment, which was a limited assessment of... They did a handful of borings around the tank, around the fuel line, to see if there was any contamination present. They did find some levels of contamination, though they were under what they call actionable levels, and did not require any notification to DEQ based on what they found at that time. We did try and make some adjustments in the estimate based on what they did find. A lot of that was centered around the soil contamination and what we had to do to dispose of that soil that we disturbed. A big factor, what we did not know, was how much groundwater we'd been encountering. We knew that the groundwater was high just from the geotech report that Kessel had initially done. So at the last commissioners' meeting, we asked for additional funding, both to release steel design and to release design on the deep foundations that we knew were required from the original geotech report. In addition to some additional investigation to further that testing and reporting on the soil and the water. Part of that included what they call slug testing, which tells you the conductivity of the water, basically how permeable the soil is, how fast that groundwater would recharge if we were to pump it out as we're, you know, either digging foundations, doing deep foundations, potentially removing the existing underground oil tank. And through that additional testing and coming up... Right. So stepping back a little bit, going back to the GMP, including the alternates that were selected, we did end up at a GMP of $7,844,813. Go ahead.
Project was bid in early August to all the subcontractors. That's that $7.84 million number for the cost of work. Up in the top there, you see GMP-1 and GMP-2. That's the early work that we approved in two steps. One in the May meeting and one in the August meeting last month to do some of that early procurement for the deep foundations and structural steel, along with the continuation of services to finalize the work required for the oil tank removal. Both of those two GMP numbers live inside of that $7.8 million GMP number. We just extracted them so that they could be approved early to help maintain a schedule that gets us to a place where school can start with this work complete. So this is a summary of all of the things that have happened since then. You can see at the top that $7.8 million number. That's the bid price from taking the scope of work to the market. That's the scope of work that you see under project scope, the four-classroom addition, the pre-K classroom renovations, the three project labs, the media center renovations, the outdoor classroom space, and the middle school renovations work, including deep foundations required by the geotech report for the new classroom addition. So that's that $7.84 million number at the top.
Will you go back one slide?
That includes those two numbers that we tracked from GMP-1 and GMP-2.
Should that be, GMP-2 I had as 185.5?
It is. Only $145,000 of that was budgeted in the GMP number.
Okay.
There was some additional testing required that was not part of that early tracking, and so I've pulled that $40,000 number out. A few other scope items have come up along the way in this project that were not part of our estimating and not part of the original scope for the project. There's some data and security and intercom wiring work that will need to happen that is sometimes provided by owner. In this case, we're gonna, we can roll it into our project. That's a cost of $57,000. The emergency radio booster systems that y'all have been testing at all of the campuses throughout the district. The Highlands project needs one of those systems. That's an allowance in there right now for $180,000. That system has not yet been designed. That is typically designed by the vendor that installs those systems. So we've added that as a line item here. We've also discovered that the existing fire alarm system in the middle school building does need to be replaced in order for us to add devices for the four new classrooms that are proposed for that building, and that's at a cost of around $100,000. So there's $337,000 worth of additional scope items that have come up over the course of the project from one place or for one reason or another, either part of a larger countywide initiative for the emergency radio systems or other things that we've discovered along the way as the project has continued. I'm gonna let you talk about the mitigation.
Right. So three options we had discussed for the mitigation. One, Josh had brought up at the last meeting, the track down was, is it possible to abandon the tank in place, clean it, close it, and the NCDQ? NCDQ. We're still tracking that down. I will say, we have notified DEQ based on the last round of testing. There were some exceedances that required that 24-hour notice of release and notification to NCDQ. We have had some minimal contact and conversations with them. Based on what they saw initially, it does seem that we will be able to leave the tank as an option. It's not set in stone yet. It's not 100% guaranteed, but it does seem like it's still a possibility. Option two was removing the tank, which involves shoring all four sides of the tank. It kept our backfill and our dirt disturbance to a minimum, aside for option two. And one benefit to that, in talking these early conversations with the supervisor at the Asheville Regional Office, was that potentially, if we go with option two, it can provide a clean closure for that tank if we remove all the dirt within that shoring perimeter. We would still have to test the dirt again outside of that perimeter. If that dirt came back under their actionable levels, it could be considered a clean closure. Now, the difference between that and option one is if we went with option one, it would include a restriction, a soil restriction on the deed that would be a residual notice of petroleum. And then option three is removing the tank. It's removing down to six, what they call the smear zone, which is basically where the, for lack of a better term, but it's where the oil and the water do not mix and basically floats at the level of the groundwater. So on the eyes of DEQ, removing it down to that level removes, you know, vast majority of contaminants and greatly reduces that, the contaminancy you may find in that soil below where the building footprint would be. Obviously, that's the most expensive and highest-risk option. I think the school board may have discussed it, and I don't know if they had an opinion on which option they may prefer to proceed with, or...
I think just to sort of summarize, that those three options plus that additional scope for your consideration, those three numbers, that 7.8 plus the 337 number, and whatever option is chosen for the oil tank mitigation strategy, that would become your total GMP for your project.
How big is that tank?
10,000 gallons. It's about eight foot by 30 foot wide by seven, eight foot deep.
How many yards of concrete's that?
How many yards of concrete are in...
Oh, pardon. 10,000. 40 yards, sir?
We did have a school board meeting last Friday. We set an emergency school board meeting so that we could have a conversation about this, because we knew that your vote tonight was so critical to keep us on track. And as a group, we discussed all three mitigation options. And it was determined that we do prefer option number two, but would be willing to go along with option number one pending DEQ's approval of that, everything that went with that, and that it would be safe for the students. Also, there's a contingency with that, is we prefer that it is filled with concrete and made sure that it is double-stable underground if it is left there. But to be clear, we do prefer option two. I think there might be some question about final cost on one, if that maybe can be even done for a little less. I think we're waiting on some numbers for that. I do hope that you will consider going ahead and voting for the GMP that you presented for the construction cost so that we can get some things ordered. That's what we're really, that's what... That's what we're really, that's what Kevin and his crew and Brian, they need to get things ordered tomorrow. Today is kind of the drop dead deadline to stay on track to open doors in August of next school year and not have construction on site while children are in school. So to the extent that you could get that approved at your, with your confidence, then I would appreciate that.
I think this final slide is a bit of a summary slide that compares us to those early estimates that were presented in June of 2024 and a comparison of the bid outcomes from the August bidding and the subsequent estimating that Vanoy has done to add the additional scope and to address the fuel tank mitigation. And you can see at the bottom here what, how we're tracking between those two estimates that were presented in the earlier part of this year in May and June and what bid outcome was in September. If we break those two things down, one of the things that we've been doing throughout this project is tracking the renovation scope and the pre-K scope separately because of some of the funding that is available for the renovation piece and not the other piece. And so this is really sort of how those two projects break down as a part of that total down there, both in construction costs, which is the blue number, and the total project cost in the green number. When you add those two numbers together, you reach that September 24 totals. But I wanted to start pulling that out, Lori, primarily for your benefit because of how the funding is gonna work for this project.
How you derive these numbers, those three options?
Which numbers? The three options? I'll let Vanoy speak to that.
Have you bid those?
I'm sorry?
Have you bid those or are you obligated to bid those?
No, it's part of a conversation with Terricon, and we've worked with them to come up with unit prices on what you encounter for disposal of water, disposal of soil. There's some money in there for option one, for potential foundation redesign if we leave the tank in place, as it does play an effect on the grade beams and the helical piers. And it also includes some money for pit protection if we went with option two. But mainly, the large portion of those dollars is soil and water disposal.
This thing started out as a $5 million project. We're nine and a half now. I didn't vote for any of it, and I can't vote for this, but gentlemen.
Well, I think if we go back to the very beginning of the project, those are the first numbers that y'all were presented in the early part of 2022.
We killed it one time and it came back.
Yeah, we did.
Emily, can you get back to the number slide, please? Yeah. So the reno in green and the pre-K in green?
See you.
That is an extrapolation of that owner's soft cost subtotal as a percentage of the overall. I extrapolate this.
But should the two green numbers total the 9499862?
No.
Why should they total?
The 94, yes, they should.
I get 9162612.
That's because you always check my math, and I always...
And I don't think this was in our agenda packet, so I looked for it today, and it wasn't in there, so...
And so, and the GMP that you're gonna approve or that is being asked to be approved is really this, this number would be the 7844 plus the 337 plus whatever option is selected for that. And so the soft costs are all estimate numbers, Lori, until we get final pricing on what furniture costs and special inspections and testing services on site.
So you're not asking for soft costs tonight, but that will be a later item because you've got to have them.
That will be a later item, but we need to get those numbers locked over the course of the project.
Right. And just to speak a little bit more to option two and option one, because it's not set in stone that DEQ will allow, I mean, 100% will allow the tank to remain in place, we think it would be the best course of action to, if we approve tonight, to approve option two. If it's the board's decision to run with option one and leave the tank in place, we'll certainly do that. But in order to have the funds in place in case option two is what's required by NCDQ, I think that would be the best path forward.
Well, and my question is, you say the 7.8 includes GMP one and two.
Yes.
Well, that's already budgeted. So wouldn't that have to come off of that number because the count and the 634,300 is already budgeted from the repair and renovation fund? So, but what happened to the 40,500? You know, on the first, the slide previous to this, you had 185, which it was actually 185.5. And then I asked the question, so next slide, you've got 145,000. So I guess the 40,500 was not a part of the original GMP?
Correct.
So we'd have to take the 7844813 minus 2438 minus 185.5 plus 40,500 plus 337270 plus 825, I think.
Yes.
And back out the 634. So yeah, I'm getting lost in all these numbers, so...
Well, and the other question that I don't know the answer to is, is the 634 still the balance of the repair and renovation?
It's not, and that's another thing. Like, and like your other slide, you had it broken out, but it didn't tie back to the number, so...
Didn't tie back to what number? Let me go back.
The very last slide.
Right there.
The two green numbers on the left do not tie to the 9499862. And I don't know, that's what...
That's because...
That was my question, like...
That 337 is not in there. So that was in, and I don't know what happened to my thing, or there we go. So it should, it should minus the 337 number because what I was intending to do there is give us a way to compare back to how this project has evolved and to clearly identify and see where additional scope has happened. Because of all of the moving parts and the stopping and starting, it was easy for us to, for everybody to lose track of what's happened over the course of the project. And so the, these numbers over here do not include that added scope, that 337. That is because that was added later.
I think that ties. But with the original GMP not including the 40,500, it seems like it should have been added here. I'm just trying to follow all the numbers and make sure we don't short ourselves.
Yeah.
But speaking of the repair and renovation fund, and right now, there's $1,298,824, but of course, we've only applied for 634,300. So we'd have to do a revised application, which our board has to approve, the school board has to approve, so...
That's a big, that's a big development.
So...
Right, because that, the renovation cost has been tracking in the 1.1, 1.2 million dollar range since we bid that part of the project last May. That was the bid outcome, and then you can see again here that that same, that same scope of work is still hitting around that million dollar number.
So according to those numbers, you're $8 million for the four classrooms and you're 101.2 for renovations?
That's total project cost, yes.
Eight million for four classrooms?
No. Eight million for four classrooms plus two pre-K classroom renovations plus three project lab renovations plus media center renovations and outdoor classrooms.
So what's your final number, Lori?
I don't know. This would have been nice to have before tonight.
I understand that.
I mean, you know...
I understand that.
Wait us through the weeds here.
Deep in the weeds.
So it sounds like there's enough R and R money to approve the Highlands Middle School renovation if both boards wanted to do that. So that's a question, of course. And if the DPI would approve it, you know? Again, we've only done 634,300, so I don't know what you guys want to do. If you want to just take it out of fund balance, and then we can, both boards have a future discussion to see, do we want to use all of the R and R money to fully cover the renovations if DPI will approve, you know? Because I'm hearing time is at the essence. This needs to start tomorrow, so I don't know.
I'd love to have a towel here if you can come up.
I don't mind if I just go ahead and break the ice and move on here. I mean, Paul Boni was a better pincushion than you, and I'm sorry. I just, I have little faith in the projects we have going on with LS3P. Started 140 million dollar high school, middle school track, bottom's blown out of it, this project, the bottom's blown out of it. I have zero faith. I don't feel good about this. I have anxiety because I do support this project. I want to see it through. I love the concept. I don't think it's equitable. I think this is absurd for the amount of money that you're talking about putting in the ground for a concrete tank. And I don't feel good about it. And I feel like, I have to feel good about this. I'm representing Macon County here, and I don't feel good about it. So I'll carry that burden. I don't mind if I sit down with you. I don't know. I did support a four or five million dollar project. Okay, 6.5, we've hit some problems. We're a train off the tracks right here, and I'm sorry, that's just the way I feel. And I'll save the rest of my comments for the track on the next slide. But I had a phone call this morning in regards to Howland's project wanting to know if the grass and the turf is part of this. I mean, that's gonna be over a million dollars right there if we decide to turf it. That's not a part of this. And I feel like that's the problem here, is we never have this, our job completely encompassed in this box that I can check. I feel like we just check the box, then there's another box to check, and then you check two more, and by the time the project's over with, you say, all right. You know, it's kind of like me paying taxes in a year's time. I just, I don't, how do I, how do we get done with this? And put it all in a nice little package and be done? I just don't feel good about this, and that's where I'm at. I'm sorry.
Well, that brings up my next question about the soccer field. What part of, well, let me back up.
We need to move this right here.
Yeah. Hillary, what, what, why do we have to have an outdoor classroom space? What can we do to reduce this price back down to where we're at in order to move this thing forward? This thing has escalated over, and I mean, it just keeps going and going, and now we're looking at a soccer field in Highlands. You're talking about going out there and digging out 25 feet of muck and filling back in and all this other stuff. Where can we come up with additional funding for this?
That's your job is to fund this project.
I understand, but this thing, what can you do without?
We've been going for two and a half years on this project. We have jumped through every hoop you've asked for. We've given you a list, Josh, of what you asked for. These are the boxes we were checking that you asked us to check. I don't know what else to give you. You're all in a hurry tonight. I don't know what you've got to do, but I went to Asheville and back today, ran my kids up, picked them up at soccer, came back down here. I've canceled Christmas parties when there was a joint meeting called on December 23rd to pull the project. No, I would like to finish.
Okay, go ahead.
Because I've been in the car for three hours today, actually five.
Okay.
I don't know what else to give you other than what Emily has spent her evenings working on. She sent this out this morning. We've gone through advanced planning studies that we funded. We vetted this. We vetted this with Mr. Shields, with Mr. Young and liaison committees. I'm not gonna sit here and get into the positives of an outdoor classroom just to have you throw back at me that it's an excess. Because frankly, I don't think our schoolchildren are in excess, and I'm tired of having to fight day in and day out all the time about this. It's eight and a half million dollars.
Yes.
You have it in fund balance. You just said 30 minutes ago that you get four to six million a year. We knew this was coming. You knew this vote was coming tonight. And yet again, we're asked to stand here and somehow defend something that should be a no-brainer. This is a softball. Put the investment in the kids.
We don't even have a final price. We don't have a...
The final price is sitting in front of you. If you would like to take two seconds to add 7844813 plus 337 and then make a decision on what you would like to do for a fuel tank removal, that's going to have to be done no matter what, then you can choose to vote on that or you can't. Because frankly, I'm not going to give any more of my time just to come up here and get treated this way. And to have you talk about Emily in that way, who has worked really hard on this for years. And Vanoy came all the way from Asheville. You were told last meeting, because we keep coming down here, that this was the night to make the vote. That's why we have folks from Highlands here to do it. So please do it. I'm begging you to do it. We know it needs to be done. We're all counting on it. I didn't think this was gonna be what we were walking into. I thought we'd answered every question. We called an emergency school board meeting that folks had to zoom in and come in from out of town and all the things to spend their time on on Friday so that we'd have some answers for y'all. I feel like I can't go any more above and beyond on this than I can, so...
You're going way beyond what my question was. What can we do to reduce this additional $825,000 that we were not expecting to deal with?
If you would like to vote on a GMP that factors in option two and have some things reevaluated within the full budget, you can put that vote out there. You can vote for as much or as little on this as you want, but what needs to be done is it needs to be voted on. What you can do is make a motion like you did for GMP two to go through. We're trying to stay on a timeline here. And I don't, I don't feel like we need to pull back a scope that was presented. And Emily walked you through that because the number kept saying, Mr. Higdon kept saying, oh, it was five and a half million. She just explained to you why that was. There is no fuzzy math. There's no, nothing. We're trying to hide in the details. We're trying to do this as cost efficient and effective as possible while maintaining the integrity of the original scope.
Okay.
That's really all we're doing. I promise you.
What are we gonna do about soccer field?
The soccer field?
Where's the money coming from for the soccer field?
We did a year-long study at your request. We have study results. I would love to see some initiative for somebody to put some money into a designer or whatever needs to be done for the soccer field. This is a, this is a capital camp, a capital program that has to be funded by the county. And the school board has done what we can with our resources, as you say, non-professionals. Let's get a professional in there.
But my point is...
Please, I could use a partner to push that, to get, to get that project going. Because right now, I'm trying to get this done and checked off my list, and then we can go on to the soccer field. I'd love to loop it in, however you want.
But then we're gonna be hit with another 1.2, 1.5 million dollars for a soccer field, and all I'm trying to do is how, how can we get this project off the ground and still retain enough funds in this in order to go through the soccer field project?
Which we all know is there. We all know that's sitting there and looming because it, everything up at that mountain has been kicked down the road for the last two and three years. That's how I felt. We give you the information. We do the studies. We do this. Let's do something. Let's just get it done. We have a school board meeting on September 30th. I was fully prepared that in Highlands, we were gonna have a ribbon cutting right before that school board meeting because they're already on the ground doing the work. So let's get that done. Y'all all come up there, make a vote tonight, fund this project, and let's have a ribbon cutting and get it done. Can we do that?
Board of Commissioners, if I may, so given what Emily and Vanoy Constructions presented tonight, so I took the $7,844,813, added in the $337,270, added in option two, the $825,000, because that's what I'm hearing is kind of the option we're going with. Then from that, and I also added in the $40,500 because on GMP two, you're saying only 145 was in that 7.8 number, so we need to add 40,500 in. Then I backed out what the county has already budgeted, which is 429,300, and I backed out the 634,300 repair and renovation fund. So I come up with $7,983,983. And again, that includes zero soft cost.
Correct.
You're saying y'all will come back at a later date for soft cost.
That's part of the RFQ, Lori, that we need to send out for our Geotech services.
Right.
And then furniture.
Furniture and stuff, okay. So I just want to make sure this board is clear. Did you get that all for the minutes, Tammy, pretty much?
What was your final number?
So again, if you look at Emily's slide that's on our screen, it's the 7.8, and I'm just rounding, the 337 plus the 825,000 plus 40,500 from GMP two that wasn't in that original 78. Then I backed out the 429.3, county's already budgeted, and the 634.3, the county's already budgeted with R and R funds. And I get at the 7983983. So, of course, it's your pleasure. If you wanted to approve this tonight, you would make a motion to appropriate $7,983,983, sorry, $7,983,983 from general fund balance to move forward with this project.
That's for the guaranteed maximum?
Yeah, that includes all the things I just talked. The GMP, the added scope items, the fuel tank removal does not include... Does not include any soft cost.
So they got 2 million over that original 5 million that we thought about? That's basically what you're saying?
It's 3 million.
I don't know what original numbers. I think Emily's first slide had an 8.6 million number that was bounced around years ago as an initial number, but that might have been soft cost.
The original project budget that was issued at the end of the planning study had a $7 million construction cost and an $8.6 million total project budget that included the scope work that we've basically presented tonight without the added cost or the fuel tank removal. Those are the two things that are different from the numbers that you saw there in the beginning of 2022.
I feel like we're down the road right here. You see what happened in Georgia. Anybody can pull up this school right downtown. Security there's not good. You wanna spend $10 million, I can give you my case in point was Macon Middle School. I didn't support that renovation. That turned out to be a good decision. They were fixing after about half a million dollars in Florida out there. I just, I don't feel good about it, and that's just my personal opinion.
Well, we need to go forward. Make the motion that the GMP may have to help me with this. 7.7 million, 983,000.
$983.
$983. I just didn't know if I had two 9, two 983s.
Yeah, it's a lot, yeah. It just happened, so $7,983,983. We would need a budget amendment from general fund balance to cover the GMP plus the additional scope plus the number two option on fuel tank removal. And knowing that as a board, there's gonna be some additional costs, the soft costs, the furniture, we've gotta have some geotech stuff, we've gotta issue a request for qualifications to hire an engineer to do geotech. So this isn't it. But the other side of that coin, you know, you two boards need to have a joint meeting or something, or your liaisons, and decide, do you want to try to apply for that 600-something thousand of repair and renovation funds? Because those could be put back in the general fund. But, you know, that's just not something that I don't think y'all can decide tonight. But to, if you wanna keep the project moving so it stays on schedule, to me, this is the action you need to take tonight, knowing that as joint boards, you could maybe make the decision to use some of that R and R money, which we could come back and revise this budget downwards. Does that make sense? And again, just knowing that there are some soft costs that, I guess, LS3P slash Vanoy, whomever, will be coming back at a later date to get those funds as well.
We're too, we're too far along to go backwards.
Well, we're not going backwards. We're, we're trying to get these prices where they should be, Mr. Chairman. These, I mean, this is, uh, they just keep going and going and going and going, and where does it stop? And, and I'm really concerned about the soccer field. Where's the funding coming from for the soccer field? Because as soon as this project is done, I'm gonna be hammered. "Oh, you've got to give us money for the soccer field." And I'm trying to figure out a way to come up with the funds to move this project forward and, and be considerate of the need for the soccer field up there. And that's what I was trying to express, my concerns and my questions, was where's the money coming from for the soccer field? And is there anything that's in this project that could be removed at this time that's not going to affect this project? That would allow us to move this project forward and, and still be mindful of the soccer field. And I'm like Josh, I think that 825, 600,000 for this oil tank is excessive.
Well, I'm going to...
Emily, how bad would just derail this if we tabled this till next month?
No, it's just, it's a schedule chat, it's a schedule issue, and I think Vanoy needs to really speak to that, because they've built the schedule around having those four classrooms constructed in time for school to start next year. So those classrooms...
Just based around the four classrooms?
Yeah, those new classrooms have to relocate students out of the renovation space and the pre-K in order for the kids who already go to school there to have classroom space and to also bring pre-K classrooms online.
Is there, is there a plan in place? Like, where would they be relocated to?
That, well, right now, the people that are in those pre-K classrooms, we do a little bit of moving around so that new, those students can move to the new classrooms that get built. And so the plan is for, I think you're gonna have pre-K open or constructed over the summer. Is that right?
Right, yeah. All the renovation spaces will be constructed over the summer when school is out. The addition would start ahead of that, so it would lead the way with the rest of the renovation spaces finishing before the start of the fall of 2025 semester.
So a scenario where we don't have the construction completed before school starts, presumably renovation of existing classrooms that are, that's still in progress when school starts means they don't have enough classrooms for the students that currently go to school there. And it would postpone the opening of any pre-K program on that campus to some, you know, date in the future. But we cannot have existing classrooms still being renovated once school starts next fall, because we will have a shortage of classrooms if that's the case, unless the classroom addition is completed. And so the risk of overlapping those two and delaying the schedule is that we can't get all the work finished in the summer, and then we start the school year with a deficit of classrooms, that we cannot put every class that already needs a spot into not enough spots. Does that make sense?
Do we make a motion on this one?
One other, if I could add one thing, um, you know, and we had no control of that tank getting put there. We can empathize with the situation. And to address your concerns on the cost, it is a little bit more than just abandoning the tank. We're happy to provide the backup. It is an allowance. What doesn't get spent goes back to you with the transparent process of what we spend with Bryson, with Terricon, with the different vendors to get there. But in addition to the fill in the tank, you're having to redo the structural, the foundations so that you can bridge over top of it. You're having to put a moisture mitigation system in place. You're having to remove all the dewatering while we put in foundations and do those different things. You're having to remove that and pay to have it sent somewhere else. What else am I missing there, Kevin? Testing piece related to it?
Yeah, part of that fee is the, or allowance is the environmental consulting, so it's someone manifesting all the dirt, all the water leaving the site, it's doing the additional testing for the actual tank closures. There's more soil testing has to happen, there's more reporting that goes along with that that goes back to NCDQ to actually close that tank out. So that's a portion of it. 65,000 of that for option one, really option one and option two is for that vapor mitigation system. So that's a system that would go below this slab that would capture any vapors that remain in the dirt below that building footprint, and it would expel those above the roof line away from HVAC. Similar to a radon mitigation system some of you may have in your house.
Especially so some of those dirty guys in the country that go up there. I guess what I'm getting at is, it wasn't just a number we threw out there and said, here's, you know, what, I mean, there was some pretty scientific, no, it's not, you know, guaranteed. We still have to work and, and work with the final pricing, that you'll see what that is. That effort went into it, but it's more than just...
Let me see if I can make a motion here in words. It will have to be, is that the Howland School Project guaranteed maximum price?
Mr. Shields?
The Howland School Project guaranteed maximum price. We're gonna, at the cost of 7.9, $7,983,983.
We need a budget amendment for that amount.
A budget amendment come out of the general fund balance?
General fund balance, yes, sir.
Okay.
For the Howland School Project. That's not just the GMP. There's also the allowances, there's also the tank. So it's basically a motion to approve a budget amendment in the amount of 700, 983,987, million, 983,983 from general fund balance.
That, that's what I've scribbled all over my paper.
Okay.
That's, that's the motion. Is there a second to it?
I'll second that.
Motion, eight, second. Further discussion?
Yeah. Emily, um, how much, has there been a study in, on the condition of that scope? As far as mold, as far as possibly brick rot and stuff like that?
Not to my knowledge. There's been some previous renovations of that school to essentially do the same things that we've done in this project for the middle school project to replace HVAC equipment in both the elementary and the high school wings, the high school to window replacement, those same kinds of things that we're doing in the middle school have previously happened in the last 10 or so years to the rest of the campus previously to that, including some work to renovate the existing high school science labs. But I'm not, I'm not, not been involved in any kind of a conditions assessment of that campus at all.
The reason why I ask is, who did the, the assessment at East Franklin School?
Who did the assessment?
Yeah, that says that East Franklin School can't be...
I'm not aware of who might have done that.
So it wasn't...
No, we've never, we've never done any kind of assessment of any, the only school I've ever done an assessment for in Macon County is the Macon Middle School Project prior to the renovation work that you did there most recently.
Anyone from the school board, would they answer that for me? Who made, who did the assessment that said that East Franklin School could not be renovated or the additions at the East Franklin School that we're gonna have to build a new school for East Franklin?
I don't think the assessment's ever made, Mr. Chairman. What we conveyed to y'all was, upon looking at that old building, especially with the infrastructure whereby we have a sewer line runs directly to the middle school, lack of space, we decided not to pursue and put some monies that we had set aside out of ester funding to make improvements, because we weren't sure that was the wise use of our funds, bluntly, because of the conditions of the school. So we've never, ever made any decision about East Franklin School. That's down the road because of the issues you're bringing up. We never, ever said we're gonna ignore it and whatever, because bluntly, we have a high school right now that we're focusing on, and we also have a project up at our Howland School that we're focusing on. Once those things are done, at that point, then it's up to the Commissioners, obviously, because we're talking about bluntly 20-plus million dollars if you're talking about rebuilding, or is there an option to do East Franklin School? Which at this point, we have no idea.
Right.
What we simply brought to y'all was, we're not gonna put any more money into that school because of the inherent problems we see already existing in the current structure.
And that's the question that I brought up about Howland School. Is it worthwhile to spend $9 million for the Howland School when ultimately that school is in bad shape and it, and it's gonna have to be replaced? That's, that's, I had a meeting with the school board representative and the principal there, and I've had conversations with teachers and stuff with, and the former principal there with the floor tiles popping up because of the water issue and, and you can go up there right now, and there are bricks out of the building, there's ferns growing out of the bricks in the building, there's brick rot in that building. And so I just questioned, you're talking about 20, 20 million dollars to replace East Franklin School. Well, how far would 10 million go to replacing Howland School?
We did have a good meeting with you, Commissioner Sherrill. Ms. Brooks and I did walk the perimeter, and we, we made a couple of notes on a couple of places where there were some groves on the brick. But to her knowledge and to my knowledge, there are no underlying circumstances at Howland School that would render it non-functioning or in need of a total teardown and repair, rebuild.
Well, we've got a motion in second. Any more discussion? All in favor, you wanna read that motion again, just for clarity?
Yeah, sure. So the motion was to approve a budget amendment in the amount of $7,983,983 from general fund balance for the Howland School Project.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
All opposed?
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go with it. And good luck with the soccer field. Don't come back down here and beat me up when you need a new soccer field, because we're not gonna have the money. But I'm gonna support this, because I am a diehard supporter of, of Highlands, and a lot of people say that I'm not, and I'm a supporter of Macon County. But I am absolutely, it's right here, these increases in prices and everything else. And I hope that I serve on this board in the future for another project that I can be part of to get these numbers. But I'm not happy about it, but we've come through this project, and we talked about $8 million before, and I hope to God that you guys can save us some money on this, on some of these extras that you put in there.
We haven't had a project where we haven't.
What's that?
We have not had a project where we haven't.
Yep. And so, um, I'm not happy about it, but I'm gonna go with it, and, and so, that's, that's where I stay.
Thank you.
I guess you would call the vote again?
All right, sure. Mr. Higdon, I believe is then unexcused, and as a result, I believe the law requires that his vote then is in the affirmative, unless he was excused. So I think that, that would be a, if, if we could show hands, I believe Mr. Higdon's vote is gonna be in the affirmative based upon the...
Let me ask you a question. Did we have to make a motion for him to leave?
If he was going to be excused, he would have had to have been approved by the board ahead of time. Unexcused, um, our recollection of statute requires that that's an affirmative vote. So anyway, you, you still vote, but I, because, but his is automatically affirmative regardless what the issue is.
But did we have to do anything to okay him to leave, to make it affirmative?
No.
Okay. It's just the law says that... Did we miss, did we miss, did I miss something here of, what if he didn't only vote in the deposit?
Well, we can talk about that other, some other time. But right now, we've got a vote, so we've got...
But he's legally voted affirmative.
Right. So if we, and that's, it sounds to me like it's four to one.
Eric, can I ask for a point of clarification? Mr. Higdon did ask Mr. Shields to leave.
Okay, I don't, I don't think that that qualifies as an excuse absence. So I think it's four to one. It just, I'd say that the record reflects that that's a four to one vote with Mr. Higdon absent voting in the affirmative.
Okay. Let me, let me ask one other thing. Four to one vote. We got in mid-step there when we had the vote. Can we have the vote again?
If you would like to, if you think it needs clarified, or if Tammy thought it needed clarified, we could ask for that. But I think that it's pretty clear that it's four to one.
It doesn't need to be clarified. It's pretty clear.
It's four to one. Okay. Next.
I don't think anybody...
All opposed.
I forget then. Okay. I didn't want to be left out. All right, rock and roll.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm out of order, but maybe, give me a little bit of lenience here. I'm gonna talk to Mr. Sherrill about the soccer field.
Don't, don't let me lose the vote now.
Soccer field's kinda, kinda different. But Sherrill, we totally understand the importance of the soccer field in Highlands. It's been, you know, like I said, that's y'all's football, and you have other things going on. I promise you, what we're doing is we're trying to take the proper steps to ensure that we don't waste money when we go brush and we do some type of quick reflex fit, like this is trying to pipe up nuclear this muck, if we think that'll do it, whatever. We're really trying our best to make sure that when this project is done, we do it as economically as possible, it's done right. Because as you said, and I admire what you just said about, it's about your children there in Highlands, they deserve this. So we're trying our best to do exactly what I think you pointed out is, the absolute best job we can to give you the best possible price and the best possible fix to benefit the future generations. Does that, does that help any at all?
Have a flip?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 11C, are we still rocking and rolling? 11C, is that the last piece that the Board of Education has on the Macon Middle School Track Project update? Mr. Vanoy, appreciate y'all. Appreciate you, Kevin. Okay. Mr. Higdon, we're on number 11C. Is that you or?
Yes. Scott, you wanna have me on the middle school?
Why not?
Okay, so, let me get my notes on. Okay, currently, Macon Middle School Track Project, we have the track, it's the old track itself, the rubber service, what was left. Engineering was in charge of watching the proof rolling, trying to determine if that subgrade is viable. Their, it was not because the organics and it wouldn't compact. So their recommendation was to undercut six inches more on the straightaways and nine inches more in the, in the turns. And then lay a geotech fabric and then more gravel to provide a adequate base for the gravel and the asphalt on top of it. Yes, we're not going to, this track is not going to have NASCARs going around on it, but you got to have the dump trucks hauling a load of asphalt and about what weight?
60,000.
60,000 pounds on it. So that track has to withstand 60,000-pound trucks of asphalt and the asphalt weighing machine, for lack of a better word. Thank you, baby. So that's what we're hoping to get a good base for that track so that when that heavy equipment is on there, it doesn't damage what is there.
I think right now, the stage that we're at is that there's been two options proposed to repair the existing sub, sub, subgrade so that we can get an adequate surface to pave on. One of those options is the undercutting option that was recommended by Kessel Engineering. A second option is a cement admixture to an ABC and existing soils mixture to make this existing soil base stronger enough for us to be able to proof roll it again and to pave on top of it in asphalt. Both of those options right now come with significant cost and we were, have been asked to get a second opinion by another engineer to see if there is a more cost-effective solution to be considered before proceeding. So that's sort of where we're at right now. We're in the neighborhood of about $120,000 to $150,000 worth of remediation to the existing soils.
For each one, each option?
Each option is in, in the neighborhood of both of those things, but, in that range. So either option costs about the same amount of money. There's still some unknowns about the extent of, of organic soil that might need to be removed in addition to the six-inch undercut in isolated areas based on the results and the report of the proof rolling that Kessel Engineering conducted. So at this stage, we're looking for more cost-effective options and second opinions from other geotech engineers that might offer up a more cost-effective solution to the, to the issue. We're gonna, the, the track contractor at the moment is going to finish work adjacent to the field and some of the other field events and do as much work as possible while we wait and try to sort through these options. But there's potential that an option won't be in place before they're, they run out of work to do. And then they would come back when we're ready.
And when they're ready.
With a more cost-effective solution.
What about the weather factor?
Right now, we have a hole in the ground that's a quarter mile long without any real drainage for it. So when Hurricane, whatever name comes and dumps a lot of rain on it, it's going to be a.
Swimming pool.
Basically, yeah.
Is there a, when do you expect the option to come in? You're talking about two options, when do you expect that to come in?
We have, we have those two options for your, for consideration. I need to get final pricing from the contractor for both of those options, but we were asked today to look for a third option with another engineering opinion to maybe reduce the cost because the cost in either of the two options that are presented are north of $120,000.
And that comes to you. Is that right? Or you convey that to us, or how do we?
I, I can, absolutely.
Is that all right, Mr. Rowland?
Yes, sir.
Okay. When you become aware of it, let us know, because you're looking this time next month, probably requesting some kind of funding to pay for that, right?
But we're going to have to remediate, we don't have to remediate that soil. It can be, you can lay gravel and asphalt on top of what's there, but there will not be a warranty, geosurface of the contractor will not warranty because of what the soil engineer has found.
Is that what they call that, soft or something that?
The organic material makes it soft and so does.
Debris, debris, is that organic material when you say debris?
Yeah.
What are the dimensions of that organic material? Of what? I mean, is it the entire quarter of a mile? Is it just in sections or?
More than 80% of the track failed the proof roll. And so the, the recommenda, recommendation for a six-inch undercut throughout the track is in the Geotex report from that proof roll. There are pockets that are, have not yet been quantified of more, more widespread organics that in this scenario would need to be undercut. We've done some test pits that have some of that organics going down about two and a half feet, but the, the coverage of that is sort of, gets discovered as you dig.
How did that track last 50 years? If it's, it was in such bad shape and all the material that has been removed, how, I mean, that track's been there for a long time and it had some cracks in it. How did the kids manage to run on that track for all those years?
But it's never been used as for a track meet. It's been used mostly for PE classes out there and they did the best they can to avoid. It's the same thing with the basketball court that's been down ever since that school opened. It was cracked also and it is, we removed half of it and it's in bad shape and the kids play on it also.
And the, the concerns that we have on the outcome of the proof roll is not for the long-term use of kids running on the track. It is for it to withstand the weights and the stress that it will go under as a course of construction, to pave it adequately and to get it compacted and everything else. So it's the, really the weight of construction vehicles and the methods of construction that are going to cause the most strain on the track. And so we're, we're looking for a solution that best balances a good outcome at the start that will give us a warranted track that will stand up over time, knowing that for the remainder of the life of the track, the most weight that we might ever see on that is an occasional emergency vehicle that may need to cross the track to get to the field. And so we recognize that the long-term stress on the track is almost none, but we do have considerable effort required to construct it. That is the concern at the moment of the geotech engineer and the contractor.
Ryan?
Mm-hmm.
How much does a shuttle buggy weigh?
I don't know, to be honest with you, we don't have any.
Would that not be an option instead of having?
The. Yeah. To answer your question, that, that track had a lot of cracks in it.
Oh, yeah, it did.
That's what's going to happen if they pave it without needing compaction, it'll just crack probably when they roll it.
Never mind, never, I'm sorry, never mind 30 years later, 20 years later, a crack would happen for everyone to roll it. Possibly.
Does that company, do they warranty the subsurface as well, or do they only warrant, warranty their surface?
Well, they, the, the urethane track surface comes with a warranty. There is a workmanship warranty by the contractor for a certain amount of time. It's usually one or two years for the whole work that they do. It is best practice to proof roll the base before they pave with asphalt to confirm that they're going to get the outcome that they're looking for from the asphalt. So in either of these cases, a follow-up proof roll would happen. Either the undercut option that's chosen, the stabilization with the cement admixture that's chosen, or a third option that has yet to be discovered would all result in a proof roll at the sub base level before the asphalt paving happens to confirm that we got the outcome that we, that needed to happen in order to successfully pave it.
The warranty's on the rubber, but if your asphalt is not good, if your gravel base is not good, the rubber will deteriorate, it'll crack along with the asphalt.
So the track company's not going to warranty the rubber until a proof roll yields the appropriate?
Right, knowing that what they're putting the rubber on is going to perform as expected.
What did he say the warranty? Do you remember what he said the warranty was on that rubber? Was it eight years or 10 years or?
I think it was 10.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly.
Is that warranty kind of like ours? Pro rates over time?
I'd have to look in there.
Just curious.
Okay, Mr. Gibbs, when you get your three options?
We've got two, we'll look at a local engineer option.
You got one more to go, you'll report that to?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Derek? Anything else we need to cuss or discuss?
What do you got? I mean, you went out there and looked at the track, I haven't seen it since it was.
Bite my tongue.
Oh. Don't bite your tongue, we need to know.
So, any, any further discussion on this topic?
Nope. Next.
Okay. Let me, let me say this. D, D from 11D, I don't see the school board anymore.
Nope. We're doing the school stuff.
Don't watch the debate, don't watch the debate.
I'm trying to, if you'll hurry up.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Eric?
D is your ordinance repealing.
Okay, so we've got on the, on the ordinance repeals, the first one, the Title 11 Business Regulation, chapter 110 called cable television, that one has been rendered obsolete, basically as a result of technology. The Title VII Traffic Code has been rendered elite, I'm sorry, late, not elite.
Obsolete.
Obsolete. As a result of the general statutes, that's just normal traffic code law. The only thing that I noticed that was in the county ordinance had to do with funeral processions, but that's not going to be something that the general public's going to be aware of or is going to intentionally violate anyway. So I'd say it's just kind of a waste of words and space in the ordinance book. I'd say let's repeal that one. And then the Title IX General Regulations Regarding Fire Prevention, we did communicate with Warren Cave about that and he said, yes, that's all covered under the fire code, that can be repealed as well. So basically, those are just old obsolete ordinances that are in the codebook. We're in the process of updating the codebook and, and trying to get that recodified and then we'll be able to put it online so that all of the county ordinances are online. Tammy's, and has been working hard on that, Nina, as well as Andy Muncy, and so we're very appreciative of all, all the work that they're doing on that. So what I need on that is I need a motion, basically that we go ahead and repeal those three ordinances.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we repeal these ordinances. Not to do which one or?
I think unless there's, if we can do the discussion, if somebody thinks we need to have individual votes, we could, but I'm good with wiping them all out, one fell swoop.
Second.
Any further discussion? Motion second, then further discussion none? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Let, let me ask this again. Did Paul just vote in absence as being used?
Yes.
Yes.
And that looks like that is general statute 168-75.
You guys were drawn without being excused by majority vote.
He will win.
He just stayed here, didn't he?
So what now, what's the next?
Moving on?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
E. Ask you?
D, we're on D, let's go to E. Brother Young.
So Mr. Sherrill and I, at the Parks and Rec meeting this morning, we've been approached several times, this board has, or we, as independents on this board, I think we've been approached about finding a new line for the, the area below the pool at the Parks and Rec Center, Robert C. Carpenter Center. So with the planning of the new Parks and Rec, there've been discussions about creating a new amphitheater on the senior league baseball field, using the bank below the pool as some seating. And there have, we've been approached several times by certain vendors and certain groups, nonprofits about potential summertime, you know, events. And one in particular right now, shout out to Kelly Burns, they're trying to put on a nonprofit for, I believe it's a breast cancer awareness or some sort of breast cancer benefit, a concert series. And wanted to bring it before the board, we need authorization to, more or less, or, you know, approval for the concept we're providing here to be able to use that area as a concert-type facility. And I think to approve it as a venue for those events.
Where the amphitheater's going to be?
Yes. So I don't know where the amphitheater's going to go yet, I think it'll all be conceptual. Maybe they do a couple temporary test passes and just kind of see what works, but I think this might be a great way to kick off at a great cost. And what we need is the board more or less to approve that site as a venue.
Is, is the board also?
What's the name of that? Our event? Oh, I can't.
Is the board also, or is the county also responsible for any kind of liability, injuries or anything like that?
I'm sure it'll be just like picking on the square or the pumpkin roll, I'm sure there's some sort of, I'm sure there's some sort of liability, I mean, it's public, public grounds, you know? But it reminds me of what Silva does with picking in the park, and Highlands has something similar on Main Street. I think it'd be something similar and I think it could be a cool way to kick off that area that's not really being utilized, so.
What do you have to do?
Need a motion to approve, need a motion to approve that as a venue for, I'm having a terrible time remembering.
Nonprofit.
Well, just more or less for a venue, venue area.
I make a motion to approve that.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you, Paul.
Yeah.
E.
Yeah, and I think I've got E. So I want to say thank you to Mr. Rowland and honestly, I hate to see you go. I'm excited for you, excited for your family, and I'll have something prepared for you next month. But in hearing that, I feel like this board has an obligation to fill that seat and I feel like he's going to give us a 60-day notice and we can't wait a month to decide the next step. And I think we need, need to have a special called meeting. I think we do it sometime during the day, 10 o'clock, maybe next Tuesday, the Tuesday after.
Be out until the first.
Okay. Let's find a date, but I think I'd like to have our attorney come prepared to help us, you know, with some discussions without potentially hiring an intern county manager while we pursue a county manager. And I think we just need to have some time, it's not at 9 o'clock, that we can have, you know, just some good, healthy work discussion about the next couple steps here. And I think, John, if we can find a time that works for all of us.
Is there a, is there a job description that we could use, Mr. Rowland?
Well, I think it'd be a county manager.
Yeah, we can certainly pull those from other places, but I think we need to have the organizational meeting, like Josh said, in order to figure out, are we launching the full search, but are we likewise searching for an interim manager who can help us with that search? I mean, there's some, you know, there, and there are lots of retired county and town managers in the state who are willing to go spend two months in a place or three months to serve as an interim and help kick off or a search. And they're well-versed in, in, you know, doing as, how you, how you go about conducting that to, to make sure that you can get the most qualified person for the job. So that's, that's what I, I mean, I, I know people are going to be looking at me because I'm the only other now employee left of this board. And so that would be my recommendation is, is that we, we have this kickoff meeting to kind of to figure out which way the board's pleasure is, possibly with an interim manager who can then help us assist with trying to find the new one. I was going to make up some silly quip about how you can't possibly fill Derek's shoes, but it would, it's late and it wouldn't have been funny, so.
John, when do you get, you said you'd be back Thursday?
What's that?
You'll be back Thursday?
No, I'm leaving Sunday and I won't be back until the first.
If he's not here, you just vote yes.
No, he's here. I'm not going to be excused. I'm being excused, yeah.
He can be absent, he can be absent. That, 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 by the way, real quick, that statute applies and.
I'm going to vote unexcused.
Lori and I just looked at it, if you refuse to vote on a topic because you just decide you're not going to vote, then that's an affirmative. Or if you leave during the course of the meeting. If you didn't ever show up for the meeting, then your vote had never counted because you were never here. So that's how that came into play. And I was hoping it's on the spur of the moment I got that right and it looks like, well, this time I did. But anyway, that was 168. So going back to that, yes, Mr. Sherrill could be excused and then we could still have a meeting next Tuesday or whenever to try to get this going so that we're not delayed. and Lori and I just looked at it, if you refuse to vote on a topic because you just decided you're not going to vote, then that's an affirmative, or if you leave during the course of the meeting. If you didn't ever show up for the meeting, then your vote had never counted because you were never here. So that's how that came into play, and I was hoping it's on the spur of the moment I got that right, and it looks like, well, this time I did, but anyway, that was 160. So going back to that, yes, Mr. Sherrill could be excused, and then we could still have a meeting next Tuesday or whenever to try to get this going so that we're not delayed, trying to figure out which way we're going with that.
All right, give us some time.
Are all 100 counties in North Carolina manager, uh, commission form of government, or are there commission counties only?
I think the, all 100 are.
Are ran by?
I think Jackson County was one of the very last ones to go, where the chairman ended up being the county manager, and I remember when they finally made the step, I think there were only maybe one of three left, but that was a while ago now, too.
A heart attack, they're coming.
Uh, you'll be all right, just keep voting for whatever.
For the kids.
Yeah, there you go.
So next week, Tuesday?
Okay, so yeah, we need a motion to set a date and a time.
Well, at the end of this meeting, do you want us to continue to next Tuesday, 10:00 AM, probably?
Recession to that, that way, I mean, we could recess this meeting at the end rather than adjourn and have it continued to discuss what was added, which is 11F at that time, but so to, right now you could set that, that recessed time.
Cause you've got three or more members, it's a work session.
Danny wants nine.
Nine o'clock on next Tuesday.
You'll recess this.
It'll be on 17?
The 17th is next Tuesday, if that's the date y'all are choosing.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, September 17th, what'd you say, 9:00 AM?
What time, John? What time?
I don't care what time, I will be here.
Okay.
Are you being placed in call-in?
No.
No, where are you going?
Hawaii.
You're a doll, I've always wanted to go.
9:00 AM, where?
Here, right here.
In Europe, sir. Sounds good to me.
All right. Um, we have the consent agenda, and then I do have a closed session. Again, that's going to be brief.
So we're at the consent agenda, and?
We don't have a consent.
Yeah, you do.
Thank you.
It's item number 12, Mr. Shields.
Oh, yeah, it's back here.
Page three. There's a third page.
I'll make the motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented. And with the change of 21, uh, to 23.
So we've got a motion by John, second by Danny.
Danny, yeah. Any further discussion? If not?
Approved, all in favor?
All in favor.
Unanimous.
All in favor? Be your five.
Paul said yes.
Paul was a good vote tonight.
He's going to be, cause he was assured, he was assured we were going to recess this meeting at 8:30.
I think you brought up the discussion, I've been with.
We're on to 13, sorry.
Appointments, say none, do we have any appointments?
I don't even have the other piece of that.
Okay.
Close motion to go to closed session.
I make a motion, we go into closed session.
Motion second, all in favor?
Wow.
Four.
Four.
Five.
Oh, yes, um, to consult with an attorney, um, and then the other one is, well, that's two on one, so 143 dash?
318 dot 11 is on the agenda.
318 point 11A3, I think is attorney, but let's say two, just in case I was wrong.
Do second it now?
I did.
Any action, any action, Eric? Any planned action after closed session?
There could possibly be on one item. I got two that are each going to take one minute apiece, so yes, there could possibly be action. So yes, there could possibly be action.
Say back to kids.